Good evening and welcome to the May 6, 2020, meeting of the Milton Select Board. Before we begin the general meeting, we do have an executive session. We do have a couple of executive session items. And so I will move to enter into executive session to discuss the following business and to return to open session thereafter. First, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, specifically the Milton Patrol Officers Unit, believing that having such a discussion in open session would have a detrimental effect on the board's bargaining position. Two, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, specifically the Milton Superior Office Unit, believing that having such a discussion in open session would have a detrimental effect on the board's bargaining position. And three, pursuant to generalize Chapter 38, Section 21, Subpart A, Subpart 1, to discuss an open meeting law complaint made by Cindy Christensen against the board and the Select Board's response to that complaint. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second, and this will be a roll call vote, Ms. Collins.
Sorry, I was muted. Yes.
Mr. Farrington.
Yes.
Ms. Conlon.
Yes.
Mr. Wells.
Yes.
All right, so for all those others who are on the call, we're going to go into executive session. And Amy Dexter, who is our Executive Secretary, will explain how we do this. I anticipate that the executive session shouldn't go more than 10 or 15 minutes. So I think we'll be back by 7:20 or so. And so, and then we'll continue with the open session agenda after that.
has volunteered to assist the Health Department quantify the data that we're collecting to statistically summarize and graph what Milton statistics look like. So I'm looking forward to that. We have a webinar on Friday. And I'm going to learn more about statistics and how to put this information together for the Milton residents. The Milton Health Department has been reaching out by phone to residents, asking a series of questions to collect data and interviewing cases to identify symptoms and close contacts. What we are finding is that most of the residents who have tested positive have recovered. Some residents have moderate symptoms which can linger, such as a cough, or they were hospitalized and discharged. Some of them are discharged with oxygen, and some residents have succumbed to the virus. In my records, I have 10 Milton residents have died, but I suspect that that number is low as some people have not indicated a positive COVID-19 diagnosis on a burial permit or do not test after they have died. So we also, at the Health Department, are processing burial permits, so that's how I found that out. Governor Baker has instituted a community tracing collaborative, and the state has hired over 1,000 people to assist the local public health departments build capacity. These contact traces will be reaching out by telephone to assist us with isolating and quarantining of positive COVID-19 cases. So if you are positive COVID-19, then you may see someone calling you. If you see an MA COVID team come up on your phone or an area code of 833 or 857, please answer the phone and give information about your symptoms to the interviewee. This new collaboration with the Mass Department of Public Health and Partners in Health will help to ease the burden here in the Health Department because we've been overwhelmed with cases these past few weeks and months. This call center will be in operation seven days a week from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. And high priority cases will remain at the local boards of health, such as complex cases, congregate settings, and clusters. So we will keep cases that we want to keep, and we had one case today, and I kept it. And we're going to be keeping Bush Hill Care Center and any clusters that we're seeing. The Milton public and private school nurses continue to assist the Health Department with case management, and I'm personally very thankful for their help. The Health Department is continuing to message residents to stay home and call their primary care doctor if they become ill. We're working with MATV and Michael Lynch and his staff to continue public service announcements. Now, thank you, Michael Lynch. Governor Baker signed an order that went into effect today, requiring face coverings in public places where social distancing is not possible, whether indoor or outdoor. The Health Department is receiving calls and emails from residents concerned that people are walking down the street or walking with another person without a face covering. And I want to emphasize that if people can maintain a distance of six feet from other people, they do not have to wear a face covering. I walk down the street with my daughter. I go for a lot of walks with my daughter, and she lives with me. So we don't have to put on face coverings. If we're not wearing face coverings, that means we can walk along the streets of Milton. And unless we come into contact with someone and can't maintain that social distance of the six feet, that's when I'll pull a mask or a face covering out of my pocket, and I'll put that on. So you will see people in Milton without the face coverings, and that's okay. It's when you come within that six-foot distance that they should have the face covering. And the local boards of health and authorized agents are authorized to enforce this order, and if necessary, may do so with the assistance of state and municipal police. Violations may result in a civil fine of up to $300 per violation. And that being said, at this time, the Board of Health does not feel that punitive fines in these already financial stressful times should be adopted. And I spoke to each Board of Health member today individually, and they emphasized safety, education, and reinforcement of the order. The Police Department is and will be continuing to educate residents, reinforce the order, and promote safe health practices in Milton. So at this time, the Board of Health doesn't feel the need for that $300 per violation. They felt that that was too punitive for residents. And that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Caroline. Before we have questions from the members, could we just take a moment of reflection for the 10 Milton residents who we've lost? Thank you for that. Questions or comments from the members, Caroline?
Just thank Caroline for all of your continuing efforts and the entire Board of Health and all of your staff. Thank you for all of the good work you're doing and for giving us all these updates. And for the Channel 8 segments that you're providing, I think that's very helpful for residents to see. So thank you, Caroline.
Thank you, Katie.
I just have.
Mr. Wells.
I just have one comment on the final thing. Thanks, Caroline. You know, I talked to Laurie yesterday and Chief King. I copied Mr. Denny on this. As you're aware, the $300, the mask situation has taken so many different turns. Sunday was a good example. Yeah, anywhere you could go in Milton, places where I never saw people before, Hutchinson's Field, Copeland Field, every field, just loads and loads of people. Today in Lower Mills, you may have seen on the news, a man pulled a gun on a person because they wouldn't stay far enough away from him and waiting in line to go to a bank. So as the chief knows, and I'm sure you're aware of this, the Mass Chiefs have been working very closely with the governor on this. Situations like in Worcester with the church just kept having, so as you know, the distancing and the masks have probably been with us a while. I just want to stay on top of this. I get the feeling of the Board of Health on this, but it's something that each time the temperature goes up and people want to go out, and I get it. I mean, this has been tough. It's the, people are calling 911. The city of Boston received more calls on Sunday than they've ever received. The mayor talked about it. Complaints just on this one issue. So it's something we are going to have to stay on top of. And I am glad that the Mass Chief and John Schef, who is an attorney who does a great deal of work for them, is working very collaboratively with the governor on this, just to make sure that when these situations arise, we can take appropriate action. Not, I mean, there's a great term for it. It's called compassionate policing, but these incidents are not going to go away. And thanks again. You know, you're doing a great job, and everyone on the staff as well.
Any other comments or questions from the members? Thank you, Caroline. Thank you for your continued work and diligence and every day, every hour, living through this thing. And just thank you so much.
I want to thank my staff. They've been fantastic. Again, they're great. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Caroline. All right. Item, back to item 7, the COVID-19 update. Item 7A, the virtual town meeting. I see Bob His. I don't know if Frank Schroth is with us as well. If you, Hillary, could you unmute Bob His? And then, I don't know if Frank is on or not.
I didn't see his number.
He didn't see his number? Okay. All right. So we have a couple of items. One is to continue discussion of the virtual town meeting. If we've had any update on that. And then, second, a date for a subsequent special town meeting, perhaps later in the summer. So Bob, we had the discussion last week about the virtual town meeting. Anything further on that?
Yes, quite a bit. So thanks for the time. First, the State Senate passed, I believe it was Tuesday, yesterday, legislation. It's got about 10 different parts, but one of the parts enables a representative town meeting like Milton to conduct, they call it a remote town meeting. It's called a virtual town meeting. It includes a number of different components to it that are in line with really the way you're conducting your Select Board meeting today. But I thought what might be useful is to run through the series of steps that we would have to execute together in order to announce to the citizens and the town meeting members that this was happening. So, by the way, typically, legislation would pass the Senate, which has happened. It would go to the House and go to the governor, and maybe a reconciliation in the middle. So I don't know when that's going to happen. But just briefly, let's assume for a model sake, the governor signs it on Monday, the 11th. The first step is I would inform you in writing of the need for a virtual town meeting. And there's some clauses and conditions that indicate what I'd have to put in the letter to request it. Second, the Select Board has 10 days to vote to approve a virtual town meeting. Third, if you vote to approve, the clerk then has to notify the Attorney General that both I have requested a virtual town meeting and the Select Board has voted to approve it. Then, next, the Select Board has to, you'd have to go update the warrant. By the way, there's a fork in the road here. If this occurs before the warrant has been printed, then Mr. Denny, he would update the warrant to announce in the warrant that the meeting was going to be virtual rather than in presence at the high school auditorium. The warrants are sent to the printers, et cetera. And we would then have to go through a series of notification steps to say, like we normally do, we're going to hold a virtual town meeting. The other side of the fork in the road is if the warrant has already gone. So let's say that this legislation passes too late. And from what I understand, I believe, talking to Hillary Waite, that we have to have, the warrant's going to start printed on May 19. So let's say, for some reason, the warrant's gone to the printer, legislation passes. Then, we'd have to post a notice of virtual town meeting. We'd probably, we'd have to mail it to all the town meeting members, and then we have to notify the voters. We should discuss the best way to do that. It may be a letter, it may be an email, maybe a posting, maybe the website. So it's basically, I ask you, I declare that we need a virtual town meeting. You vote. We put it in the warrant. We notify the members, and we go. So that's the legislative side of this thing. I'll pause. Any questions? Kevin Fred tags on. He's probably read the legislation just as I have, but any comments on that?
I'll answer questions from the members. I think we're clear, Bob.
Okay. Second, I formed a committee. Let me just list off some of the members. So, by the way, I've set this up as an advisory committee to the town moderator. So they are helping me to design a town meeting experience that would be conducted virtually and remotely that is closely as possible, which is actually the language in the legislation, mimics what we would do with a real town meeting in the high school. So they include Frank Schroth as the chair. By the way, I picked Frank because he's got a lot of experience in information technology as a town meeting member. Second, Susan Galvin is the clerk because she literally has to count the votes to make sure it's accurate. She's also added in Gail Neville as her designate because Susan has a couple of elections to plan for. Rob Mallett from Town IT, he's going to help us with IT support and execution. Mike Lynch from Cable Access because he is going to make sure we can broadcast this thing on cable access, which is one of the requirements of the legislation. Mark Younger, who is the chair of my IT Study Committee, and he may be pulling in a member or two. And then Hillary Waite, who's the Select Board Executive Secretary, as you know, who is helping us as the host and most familiar with the Zoom technology. So we had that committee. I've got a work plan put together. It's got about 70 different tasks that are on a march toward our date of, if I remember correctly, it is June 15th, that Monday. So in general, I've broken this up into a number of different components. One, we have the notification segment, which is what I just described to you, how we would decide together to hold the virtual town meeting and then notify all the members and the citizens. Second, we have a design segment. So starting tomorrow, Frank has organized a call. We're going to start to design, how do we execute through the technology? And by the way, we've selected Zoom meeting, both the professional version and the webinar version. It provides a lot of different capabilities. We're going to run through between one and three design sessions, and we're going to execute to our satisfaction a town meeting with the technology and handle all the things that happen. An amendment, a vote, the equivalent of a standing vote, to be able to have presentations, points of order, recognizing members, citizen speak, all the things that we do. We're going to, out of that, identify a number of different staff members we'll need to be able to run the meeting. So we will need the moderator, a clerk, and hosts, and help desk, and people managing chat and voting in a number of different roles. The third piece is kind of a preparation segment. We'll need to prepare in advance. Voting for, as I understand it, the warrant stands today about 35 articles. So I'll try to consolidate those two, not try. I will consolidate many of those into consent agendas to reduce the 35 down to a smaller number, but we'll still end up with a number of articles that'll have to be addressed. We're going to set up votes to address each one of those individually. We'll have a training segment. We've started that already. Frank designed, I reviewed, Sue Galvin sent out a poll to all the town meeting members, all current. 289 minus those who are not running for reelection, asking them, what is your familiarity with the video conference? What's your bandwidth? Can you handle audio or video? Do you have a computer? Do you have laptop? Do you have a touchstone phone, et cetera? We've received about a 30% response to the survey. We're working to increase that response rate. We really want to understand how IT savvy and video conference savvy is our population of town meeting members so that we know what the training experience will be. And then we have a number of training sessions to conduct. So we're going to have to conduct some training for all the committees. For example, how do you, as a Select Board, have a private consult as you do at town meeting? How do you do that virtually? Second, how does the warrant committee have a private consult and vote, as we know they do at committee? How would town council confer with me? So we're going to design that out. We're going to have designing, training for all the town meeting members. We're considering that by precincts, so 1 through 10. Get as many of the 29 to 30 as possible together and run through training sessions. Then, before town meeting, have a dry run, open it up to all the town meeting members, and try a practice session. You know, we'll try a couple of articles and see how it goes. And then execute into the normal things we do of, you know, the planning meeting for town meeting, and also have a session to train the new town meeting members who will be elected in the January 9th, I believe, election that the town is running. And then, lastly, we've got product management. So my plan is to come to you and report as often as you will have me. If you'd like me every week, I'd be happy to come and talk about what's going on. We're going to make sure that all of the members of our committee are ready to go support this thing. And I think we'll be able to pull it off. So that's a short summary.
Thanks, Bob. Comments or questions from the members?
A lot of work, Bob. I hadn't even thought about the conversations among the boards that need to take place. So that's, it's quite a lot of logistics work. Thank you to you. I think whatever we can do to help, you know, advocate for this and let town meeting members know how important this is going to be for them to participate will be helpful.
Yes, thank you.
Ms. Collins?
I also wanted to say thank you. And was a letter sent out to town meeting members or is it just email? I was wondering how town meeting members who don't use email.
We did two parts. So the clerk found that there were only 17 town meeting members who are either currently members and not running, don't need to run, rather, or need to run. So we had a very high percentage. They all received an email. But even still, we only received a 30% response. Second, for the 17 members for whom we have no email, she sent a paper letter to follow up. So what I've asked Susan to do is she's going to send me a list of all the town meeting members and phone numbers. I'm going to recruit, let's call them precinct leaders. So Mike Zulus, P2, I need you to call 28 of your closest friends and say, we need you to fill out this survey. Because, by the way, my wife is a member, and hers ended up in her spam folder. So the simplest explanation is you just never, it got lost in the mail. Now, we don't need 100%, but I know that I've got a member in my mind that is my target use case that's going to run this on a touchstone phone. And so I want to design the meeting for that member so they can participate as fully as possible and execute, exercise their full rights as a town meeting member representing their precinct.
So if I were making phone calls and someone said, well, I have an email address, but I don't even really know how to use it, I could print out a copy of the survey and get it to them, and they could mail it to Susan, or how would that work?
Yes, they could mail it to sgalvin@townofmilton.org or to me at rhis@townofmilton.org, and we could collect the data on it.
Right. Okay. I'm talking about people who, like, I know a couple of people don't use a computer at all, even though they have an email address. But they could also just mail the paper copies. I'm happy to help.
By the way, some contingencies. I think Mike or Hillary have already talked to Mr. Adamsack of the library. And he's agreed to open up the library so we could have individual rooms there with the Wi-Fi available. Because some members have already said, I got a computer, I got a phone, but my Wi-Fi is too weak to do video conference. A request we might put into the school system is might they be willing to do the same with the school Wi-Fi? So if you've got all the equipment, but you don't have the internet capability, that's a backup option.
Great. Thank you.
Other comments?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Wells.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Wells.
So, thank you, Bob. So a quick question. Plagiarism can be a great strategy in uncharted waters. Is there any other community that you know of that's planning to get on this road, that is going ahead of us, that you might be able to observe them and see how it goes? Any other moderator or another town meeting that is going to be held sooner than our date?
Yeah, two-part answer. So Brookline is, I believe their meeting is a little bit after ours, but their committee was formed a few weeks before ours. So I've had a couple of conversations with the moderator of Brookline, and he's shared with me all the information from their town meeting committee. Second, I formed a committee of other representative town meetings in the Commonwealth through the Massachusetts Moderators Association. We meet every Monday night, met last night, or Monday night with them. And so we are sharing best practices. We're sharing work plans. We're sharing research into technology. I think, as I reported, it may have been last week, one of the members of that committee was a member of the Mass Democratic Committee, and they're the ones that held this 400-person statewide Zoom meeting. And this individual, as a moderator, said to their belief it operated just as a town meeting would operate. And so, and I've got the operating procedures from that group. So we are both trying to learn from others and actually share with others as much as we can.
Other, Richard, do you have something else?
Just, is there anything we can do tonight? I mean, do you have a timeline, Bob, when you want us to take a vote, or you want to just? I just want to do this as quick as we can to help you here.
Yep. The trigger will be when the legislation is signed by the governor, assuming it is. What I will do is, within a day, send you a letter that comports with the requirements of the legislation, requesting a virtual town meeting. It then is in your hands to approve that or not within 10 days, and the process follows. And it's all spelled out in the legislation. In the case that, in the case the governor may not, it doesn't pass. The governor doesn't pass, the House doesn't pass, whatever happens. I think we still need to think of the three, let's call it two alternatives. Either something in the field house or the high school football field, the Brooks Field, or we punt and you go into your 1/12 budget option.
Okay.
B and C.
I think that should be our last option.
Right. I talked to Mr. Denny. I believe we still have the Copeland Field House and the football Brooks Field saved for that Monday night.
That's correct.
Right. So legislation fails, I believe that would be our next best option. If, for some reason, a week of rain happens, whatever it is, then you might, you know, then what I would do is execute one of the normal functions of the moderator, which is declare we're unable to meet and announce a postponement. And we can do this in 30-day hops as long as it takes. And so we could postpone this, and if it had to be into the new fiscal year in July, that's when you, as a Select Board, could decide you want to go operate under the 1/12 budget. And there's legislation that covers that, which was passed a couple of weeks ago.
Bob?
So thank you for that.
Sorry, go ahead, Richard, sir.
I just want to say to you, Mr. Chair, that once this does happen, and I'm confident the governor will sign this, that we do everything we can, our board, to expedite this decision, have a meeting as quickly as possible so we can help the moderator move his strategy forward. Thank you. Thank you, Ken, Bob.
Yeah, pleasure.
Yeah, so that makes sense. I'm wondering, Bob, if it makes sense, if this legislation has passed the Senate, if it would be helpful for us to contact, so it needs to go through the House and the government, contact Representative Driscoll, Representative Colanane, to ask them to move forward as quickly as they can on this. And also, we could send a letter to governor if you think it makes sense to seek support for this legislation. Is that, do you think that would be helpful, Bob?
I think it would, yes. I know that the Legislative Committee of the Massachusetts Moderators Association is in direct contact, if not with the governor, but with both of the House and the Senate side. One of the, the moderator from Falmouth is a member of the House. So I believe there's support for this because they recognize the tough spot that towns are in while we're under this restriction. But good idea.
So we'll put something together and move on it. Today's Wednesday. We'll circulate something to the board and try to get something out sooner rather than later to both our House reps and to the governor as well, to try to get this moving along. Another question, Bob, is we are using Zoom technology, and we have for several months because of the good graces of Milton Public Access Television. If we move forward with a town meeting, it seems to me the town probably should purchase. And I don't think it's, I don't think it's big dollars, but it seems to me we probably should purchase the package. Will your committee recommend what we should purchase? And my guess is that it's less than $2,000, but maybe you can fill us in on that.
It is. So between Mike Lynch and Hillary Waite, they researched that Zoom technologies provides both this pro version, which provides all the hosting and the breakout and that kind of thing, and the webinar version, which provides other capability, like holding 500 people, because we could have 300 people in our meeting, and the mask mute and some of those things. So based on that recommendation, we worked with Jim Segroy and requested that he, and by the way, Hillary talked to Mike Denny about this, execute a purchase order for $1,500 for a one-year license, which provides not only the ability for town meeting, but your meetings, planning board, school committing for a whole year, special town meetings, whatever we got to go deal with. So you've got a pretty cheap and cheerful copy of this thing that I think will work well.
Great. Great. Other comments or questions for Mr. His?
Sure.
Katie?
Yeah, I guess it couldn't hurt for us to contact, I think we should contact Timothy Driscoll and Colanane. Did you mention the governor also? I just wanted to report, the Mass Municipal Association is really all over this really pursuing this on behalf of all the cities and towns, because there's a lot of different provisions that the cities need too. So I know there's a full-court press on by the MMA to try to get this in place. I suppose it couldn't hurt for us to add our own individual voice.
Yeah, the only reason I didn't mention Senator Timblety is that I understand it's Yeah, the only reason I didn't mention Senator Timblety is that I understand it's passed the Senate already. So, but it's probably makes sense to, to make sure that if it goes back, if there's negotiation, that, that our interest in ha- is in having this passed as soon as possible, to Richard's point earlier. So we can get moving on it.
Yeah, I meant with the Governor. I mean, I, I think the administration's heard quite a bit about all of this from the MMA. But it couldn't hurt.
All right. Item seven B is a discussion of a special town meeting date. So if we move forward with a virtual town meeting, and we have, based on that, eliminated some of the articles from the warrant for the virtual town meeting that will begin on June fifteenth. Primarily planning board articles, there was an approved investor rule article for, for investing for the, for the town. There was a Community Preservation Act article. And so the question is, when will we take up these articles? And I know there is interest certainly in the planning board in, in doing it sooner rather than later, because there's, some of their issues are pressing. And so we had had a discussion earlier about perhaps, in our board here, we had a discussion earlier about perhaps having a subsequent meeting sometime in the late summer. There are issues because our clerk is going to be getting, clerk's office is going to be getting ready for a, a election on September first, so that limits their availability for the latter part of August. So the question is, what meeting, what date would be set for that subsequent town meeting? It's probably better to set a date sooner rather than later, just so people have an idea about what we're going to do. And so the question is, do we, do we try to set that date tonight? Or do we have a discussion, try to set it in the future? I'll ask Bob to weigh in first, and then, and then, and then Mike Dennehy, I think, who was, had a discussion with the clerk, and then we'll have the members discuss it. So Bob, any thoughts about the subsequent date? And this, and the subsequent date, I'll just say, that could be, if the virtual town meeting goes well, it could end up being virtual, I suppose, or it could be, you know, either the Fieldhouse or Brooks Field.
Yes, the legislation, as I understand it, enables the virtual meeting during the health emergency. Now, the gray area would be if we go through these multiple stages, but I think the federal government's laid out, you know, these three fourteen-week stages. Are you in, are we in the emergency during all six of those two-week stages? If we are, yes, we'd re-execute the virtual town meeting. What I heard from Susan Galvin is August is deep planning month for the election. Not speaking, I'll speak for her. She'd probably prefer July. If not that, then she's going to go till the federal election in November. She'd probably then say, well, Thanksgiving is tough, she'd probably say December. So it may be that binary and stark a choice.
All right. Mr. Dennehy, do you have anything to add on that?
Yeah, to that point, Mr. Chair, we had a brief conversation today, myself and the clerk. As we all know, the clerk will always say, I will make it work, and, and we will make it happen. Her preference would be late July, but early August is also very doable. So whether it's late July or early August, she'll make it happen.
All right, thank you. Comments or questions for member, members on setting a, a, a date for a special town meeting later in the summer?
Just a quick question, Mr. Chair, before we go further. For Bob, how many days do you think we'll need? So if we have the virtual, we have a consent agenda, and we get through the articles, we're putting on the warrant, what do you think, how many days do you think we'd need in July or August? What do you, how many days?
How much lead time from before the meeting?
No, 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 no. How many days do you think, when we actually had a physical meeting here? A one-day meeting, two-day meeting, what do you think?
I would say typically the planning board articles and the CPA would be the most time-consuming. So, for, think in terms of an hour per contentious article. So if you've got more than three, you're on two nights.
Okay. Mr. Chair, how about the last week of July, maybe? I mean, it's not August, but it's the, if you're reading any of travel magazines or life and style around the New England region this summer, there's not going to be a lot of travel. I'm just throwing that out as a, I'm trying to go as late in July as we can without having to go in August even, or maybe the first week of August. I don't know.
Ms. Collins?
Yeah, I mean, that seems to me to be the open question, you know. Normally, you wouldn't want to have a town meeting in July or August because so many people are away on vacation. You want to have a quorum of town meeting members. But will people be traveling? Will people be, will, will a number of people be at the Cape or Maine or somewhere local, even if they're not traveling a great distance? You know, I, I don't know. There's so much uncertainty around it that the last week of July, I would think normally we wouldn't, we'd run the risk of not having a quorum, but it's so hard, we're in uncharted waters. It's so hard to tell what the situation's going to be.
Yeah, Ms. Collins?
Well, I, if, if we had it in July, I, I'm, that could avoid people taking college students back to school, assuming that we have that, because when you, you start getting into August, I, I have two of those that I, so, and they're far away. So I, I would imagine that if people are able to go to school, that, that would be some, something that you'd have to contend with in August. So, but Katie is right, even the tourist industry is gearing up for local travel. Being optimistic.
So I don't, I don't think we have any choice. If, if we're not going to wait until December, which I think, I don't think it'd be prudent to wait until December for the, certainly the planning board articles. I don't think we have any choice but to do it the last week of July, first week of August. And, you know, to Melinda's point, probably better to keep it out of August and to, to ease the burden on the, on the clerk and the clerk's office, probably better to keep it on, out of the, out of August. And so I, I would, you know, I, I would say to set a preliminary date for July twenty-seven, twenty, July twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and twenty-nine, which is the last week of August for the special town meeting, I think that would, I think that would be prudent for.
Mr. Chair, let me ask you, are you referring to stepping aside and planning for three nights in July?
I'm sorry?
Are you talking about planning for three nights in July?
Typically, we set aside, typically, we set aside three nights. I don't, I don't think it'll take three nights. My, my guess is that Bob is right. If you think about an hour per contentious article, if we have three planning board articles, we have the CPA, and then we have the approved investor rule, maybe it's five hours, or maybe it's two nights. I don't think you're going more than two nights. But we usually set out a third night, just in case.
So let me, my sense is that any more than one night at the end of July is too much. Because I think people are going to be away.
I'm sorry, Katie, I, I didn't quite hear.
A lot of background noise.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I think, we should not plan for more than one night at the end of July. I think that's asking too much of town meeting members and everyone involved to, to even consider going more than one night. So I, we should, we should pare back the warrant so that it doesn't include every article that we just took off. And, I mean, you know, as someone who sat on the MPIC for several years now and spent a lot of time working on the Milton Village zoning, I'd like to see that go forward as soon as possible. But we talked at our last meeting that that's really an article that you'd want to have more in an in-person meeting than in a virtual meeting. But I think we really need to consider whether that would go forward in July or whether that would go to a later date. I would not put all of them forward in July. I, I really think we should go in with the mentality that this is going to be a one-night meeting and not even think about setting aside other nights. I mean, it's extraordinary to have a town meeting at the end of July. I suspect we, we may have a quorum issue.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, Mr. Wells.
What, I, I, I hear Katie, and I agree with that on the, all the work in the MPIC where they are. So two things, just to follow up on what, what Bob said, the moderator said is, with regard to us still being in this, just looking at this type of disaster, I see no way we're out of, this is going to linger through the whole summer. On two points, A, they're going to have to keep the windows open for financial recovery. People are still going to have to apply for money, and, and to that point, in any disaster, you have to keep that door open. And second is, I think that the fear of a second wave coming September into the fall, we're definitely there. So to, I know I'm long-winded here, Bob. My question is, if you are comfortable, if you find in June we have this first meeting and you're comfortable with a virtual meeting, and we are still in a state of emergency here, would you be comfortable having a second virtual meeting?
Yes.
In July? Well, because I think to Katie's point, the fear of not getting a quorum, I think if a person can dial in from wherever they are, I think that helps us. So you would be, that's good. I, I just wanted to, that makes me feel much more comfortable because I think we're learning as we go here, as you said, and to your first point, I think we're definitely in the emergency. And if it definitely could work, if it could work for us as a second virtual meeting in July, I think we accomplish a lot for our community.
Yeah, my only advice is to assume it might not, because if, in the best of all possible worlds, if the, the opening happens on May eighteen, and this occurs in lockstep, six weeks later is the end of June. So theoretically, if everything goes great, July, you're, you've got the all clear. If it doesn't, I'm more than comfortable to have a, a second virtual town meeting. Or we are in July, we could plan, then we could plan one perhaps in the Fieldhouse, because we'd be at the end of that third stage, or we could be out in Copeland Field. Imagine a nice July night, not Monday night, then Tuesday night, depending on the weather, and then it'd be, you know, we could get good attendance.
Do you think there'll be any, any allowance in the legislation, given Katie's points about the concerns about a quorum in July, that would allow both in, in, in presence town meeting, in a virtual town meeting, to be held together? In other words, if I'm not here, just similar to our meetings, if a member can't be here and they're able to dial in, could, could we conduct both in a town meeting? Do you think that's something that would be acceptable?
Kevin may weigh in, but my reading of it is it's binary. I either declare, yeah, that we can or cannot have an in-person town meeting, and then you vote on whether we can or cannot.
Okay, I get it. Thanks.
So can we, so, so can we, if we're all agreed that the, the last week of August, to Katie's point, at least we could, I think we could at least agree on the Monday, the twenty-seventh, and we could circle that date as the date for the subsequent town meetings. Are the members comfortable with that? And I, you know, I'd actually seek a vote on that to, to set that as our special town meeting date for those subsequent items.
I'll make a motion to move that, I'll make a motion to move that as the date.
Mr. Chair, if I might, can I just confirm that we have space available on that date with Milton Public Schools?
Yeah, so maybe we should, we should wait until.
Okay, I'm fine with that. I was right.
Okay, wait, wait until next weekend.
If I add one comment?
Yeah, please.
You do pick that as a date, and we approach it with a poll of the members, determining if we can get a hundred and forty, if the answer is no. Even if you've already published a warrant, I could declare, I request a ten, twenty, thirty-day extension until some date when we can do it.
Right, right. So we set the date, we find out if people can do it, and then you can, you can request an extension if, if need be.
Right.
Yeah.
I think we need to have an agreement by this board that we're going to limit the number of articles that are in that warrant for July. I mean, I'm not convinced that the approved investment of trust accounts needs to go forward in July and couldn't wait until November or December. I, we need to make this a one-night town meeting for the sake of people who have kids, who have been quarantined for weeks, who were probably looking to get away for a few days. I think we need to be very respectful of that and keep this to one night. So that would be my suggestion. Let's try to limit the number of articles that are going to go forward in July to what we think is really important for July.
Let alone the golfers, who haven't been out for months already.
Right, right. No, Katie, I, I absolutely agree. Thank you.
Okay, all right.
We could go for the Fourth of July and have a fireworks show at the same time with the town meeting open.
Hutchinson Field, that's right.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, Bob. So we will put on for the agenda next week firming up that date, the week of the twenty-seventh, and then we will look into reaching out to our, to our legislative reps and perhaps to the Governor to support this legislation to hopefully get it, to get it in place sooner rather than later, so we can make this all happen.
Meanwhile, we are proceeding as if it will, and I'll send you a letter as soon as the legislature passes.
Great, thank you, Bob. All right, item seven C, a request for written approval of emergency expenditures. Mr. Dennehy, do you want to see this up? Mike, Mike, you're on mute. Nope, maybe Mike's not there, maybe.
Sorry about that, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, that's all right.
Putting the milk back in the fridge there, sorry about that. Multitasking. So, sorry. All joking aside, so this is a, I'm looking for approval from this board either to send a letter yourselves, or I can be the signatory. The Department of Local Services is asking that we inform them if we're going to need to deficit spend for any COVID-19-related expenses. They don't allow us to use our ordinary budget dollars to do this. We anticipate, Town Accountant Amy Dexter and myself have put out a feeler to all the department heads. It, it could run approximately $50,000. We're not really sure at this time, but we need, we need to ask Department of Revenue's permission to deficit spend for COVID-19-related expenditures, because they're not allowing us to use our operating expenditures for that reason. That's the long and short of it. Very similar to what I mentioned a couple of weeks ago with the federal stimulus money that the state is waiting for on behalf of communities like Milton who have less than 500,000 population. Collectively, the state will disperse that money, but that money also needs to be used only for COVID-19-related and cannot be used to recompensate for your normal budgeted FY20 money.
All right, so, so I think the, the request is either to authorize the Chair to make that request of the Divisional Local Services to pay essentially deficit spend for appropriations related to COVID-19, or to authorize, I guess, the town administrator to do that.
Right, and that, and that, that's, that's the, a better way to say it. We're putting those numbers together, and those numbers and specific dollar amounts will be requested through June thirtieth of 2020 in the letter we send to the Department of Revenue.
Mr. Chair, I'll authorize the, I'll make a motion, authorize the town administrator to do that. If that's all right with you.
Okay, motion's been made.
Yeah, let's, I just want to be clear, the, so the motion is to make the request of the DLS for the town.
Yes.
Pay the town liabilities in excess of the appropriation related to the COVID-19 emergency. I'll second the motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? It, it, the only question I have is, Mike, is it better to have the letter come from you or from, or from the Chair of the Board?
I, I think it can come from me. We're, we're collecting all this information. Obviously, you have police and fire who've had some overtime expenditures. Chief Procurement Officer has been spending an abundance of time and money securing PPEs, things like that. But there are line departments that, that also have it. So I think if it, if it, if I could roll it into a ball and, and itemize it and, and bring it in front of this board before we actually send the exact letter, but this is, this is, this is notifying them that we're going to be asking for deficit spending. I, I think, I think from me is fine.
All right, motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All who's in favor, it'll be a roll-call vote. Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Farrington?
Yes.
Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mrs. Wells, yes. Okay. Item seven D, this is the, and I apologize to our participants from the Milton Interfaith Courageous Association and Courageous Conversations. This is a presentation and discussion on the United Way Fund. Ms. Conlon had initiated this on behalf of the Board, she'd initiated, including the United Way as a coordinator to collect donations for the needy of Milton. donations for the needy of Milton, as has been done in other communities. And I know that's been ongoing, and progress has been made on getting that set up here. But related to that, we've had the Courageous Conversations and the Milton Interfaith Clergy Association present us with a proposal on the Ponset Neighbors Together. So, so I think we have, I think we have Karen Grace Horan, and Lisa Ward, I see, and Debbie Alsabay. Hillary, can you make sure that Lisa Ward and Karen Grace Horan and Debbie Alsabay are unmuted?
Ashlyn, Ashlyn Marison.
Oh, Ashlyn Marison, yep. Could you, Hillary, could you unmute Ashlyn as well? Let's see, do we have her unmuted? Where's Ashlyn? I'm not seeing...
She is there.
She is, yeah, there she is. I, I see her. Okay, all right. So, so I apologize for making you wait so long. Some of these things went longer than we anticipated. But the floor is yours, and, and you can take it however you want.
Great. Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Select Board, for your time this evening. We've been looking forward to this opportunity to speak with you about what we've been doing over probably the past five weeks. And I, let me say, come into this with the intersectionality of many roles, one being a very active community member in Milton, and found, a co-founder of Courageous Conversations, as well as a United Way Director of Community Impact, who has been on the front lines of all we've been doing with our COVID funds since March 14th, when we first formed our overall umbrella fund. I've been working in towns of Winchester, Lynn, now Dedham, to be point person on, you know, those three of 14 funds that we're working with around the greater Boston region. And so let me go back to what hearkened Courageous Conversations and Micah to get together. First was a call from a friend who's a Milton doctor, and at the front lines of the COVID crisis at the Boston Medical Center, and she's also a public health master, so she's involved in the data that she sees on a daily basis. And she was at a critical point, and she said, "You just would not believe the numbers I'm seeing that are impacting not only Milton, they're not that high, but right over our borders, in Hyde Park, in Matapan, and what are we doing, or what can we do to help our neighbors?" So that, that call, and then she wrote this really vivid article about a young man that was 27 years old, and his whole family was in the hospital having just been diagnosed, because a frontline low-income service worker, who's an uncle, lived in their house and had infected them all. So, and everybody went home, except this young man who was 27. He ended up being on a respirator two days later because he had asthma. And he, they lived just over the Hyde Park Line. This doctor lives out Rush Hill Road. She's like, "This is one of my neighbors," and I, I'm just so heavily struck by, what can we do to help these families, these black and brown families that are in heavy concentrations and density, that live so close to us? So that was what prompted a meeting. Micah and Courageous Conversations spoke together about this. We started down the road, Lisa Ward and Shelley. Davis, yeah, Davis were keenly involved with the Boy Scouts, and them considering opening up some space at the Egan Center. They thought they could house probably 30 people. And we hadn't decided yet, is this frontline workers that are not COVID-positive, which was probably what we thought would make the most sense, so we didn't have to get into the medical components of overseeing a COVID-positive housing space. Anyway, we moved forward, thinking, wow, they toured the space, it looked like it could work. It fell out with the board of the Boy Scouts, though, unfortunately. That was put on a back burner. About the same time, you know, we heard from Winchester, I was working with Mike up in Winchester, and he had mentioned that he had said something to the Milton Select Board at the MMA meeting, I believe. So it made me think, wow, if we structured the, the Milton, you know, community as a fund, you know, of course, food, or the critical needs that we're seeing now, housing expenses and utility expenses are really what the United Way Fund is focusing, our scope of coverage and services for people that are in crisis right now. So that prompted us to then reach out to the Food Pantry in Milton, Milton Resident Services, to find out, what are your needs? What are you seeing? How big is the crisis impacting you? And the feedback was, not, you know, we've been so generously endowed from the town, and from our, our, just donations off the street. People are just flooding in with generosity. So it was great to hear that. So it prompted United Way to say, okay, so what is the need? You know, is it down the road? Are they not seeing it yet? You know, is there something, you know, across the borders that does partner well with what is going on in this crisis? Because we're seeing, these numbers are critical, and people are not getting food in Matapan, and in Dorchester, and in Hyde Park. So is there something more of a regional focus that could happen? So that was kind of what was going on in the conversation behind the scenes in United Way. So, and then Katie had, and I had exchanged emails, we finally got in touch, and kind of saw the parallel paths that, you know, we'd been on. I know you all had been thinking about this, you know, in a more, you know, the more traditional sense of what this neighborhood, or what this community fund looked like for just Milton. And we're coming forth wondering, is there a way to look at this where we can benefit Milton residents, but if the funds aren't getting used, is there a way we can also work with our Napontet neighbors to get money to our neighbors that really are in desperate need? And I'll move that on, but just finish with, we were on a call today with Micah and Zeneta Armstrong, that's the Reverend just across the border in Matapan Square. She's dealing with a family that just had this diagnosis, and trying to find them housing so they don't have to live in compact quarters together, and, and knowing that the lives of her congregants are at stake here. She's like, "This is family, and what do we do?" And now it's hitting, you know, it's just starting to scratch the surface, but what are we gonna do to help each other in all this? So that really just struck to the core, you know, this is life or death, and what can we as a community do to help not only Milton, but we hope, perhaps more broadly, our, our area neighbors? Because COVID knows no boundaries. It doesn't just contain itself in one area, and it heavily impacts black and brown families, as the statistics have starkly shown, which is really troubling as well. With that, I'll pass it on to Deb Alsabay. She's done some great research, contacted mental health, or not mental, all the medical health centers in the Boston neighboring areas, and really gotten some great data, and driven us to then reach out to other not-for-profits in the area. Food pantries, what are their concerns, and all that. So Deb, I'll pass it to you to...
Thank you, Karen. Thank you, Select people, for letting us come to the meeting tonight. So, yeah, I was right on board with the Courageous Conversations to try to make a difference for our neighbors. And my first phone calls were to the Milton Pantry, the Resident Fund, to then find out that they were pretty well-funded, and thinking about Reverend Zeneta over in Matapan, and how we do so much work with them with Courageous Conversations. And so called the Matapan Health Center, Padman Square, Upphams Corner, Carney Hospital, because that's a COVID place, and asked them, what are, what are your needs? What do you see your needs as being? And one of them was, when someone tests positive with COVID, a place to be able for them to go quarantine for a couple of weeks away from their families. And then also became a really big thing, is a lot of times, like, you know, we're just looking at Milton's numbers, like, we were just reported 249 cases. The health centers across the border, Matapan Health Center, 50% of their people are COVID-positive. They, it's rare for them to have somebody that is not COVID-positive. They're not even a mile away from, you know, from our hospital. And it's just like, just the numbers alone, and it's just how it's affecting those communities. But what's happening is, they're, the whole families are becoming COVID-positive, and then they can't leave their places to go get food. So they're quarantined, and they can't get out. So the food pantries there used to operate where the families would have to come pick up the food and then take it back home. But because of COVID right now, they really shouldn't be doing that. But there's that disconnect. So a lot of the food pantries now are doing deliveries, so they're looking for people to help with deliveries also. And so there's two food pantries right on River Street, which again, borders, you know, it's funny, if you look at the map of like Hyde Park, Matapan, Dorchester, we're separated by the Ponset River. And, you know, we, we all are going a Blue Hill Ave, or Washington Street, or Dorchester Ave, but those plate, those food pantries are all along the edge, like the Hyde Park Food Pantry. And they're all looking for ways to get the food to the families that are being quarantined, but also to, you know, supplement. And I just called, it's called Stephanie's Food Pantry. It's healthy babies and healthy children, right on River Street, behind the Foley Building. And they, just today, they service 74 families. Tomorrow, they're gonna make delivery to 63 families. Like, this is daily, and this is a month's worth of food, and this is happening every day for them. And again, it's right across the border. And I feel like they're my neighbors that I see at the Shaw's, you know, they're the, my neighbors that I see at Walgreens. And what can we do, where we kind of have an over-avengance right now? And we also recognize that this could go a long time, and there could be more need in Milton. And I'm gonna reach out to like Mary Gormley, and to some of the, the next lineup from the Food Pantry, to find out what other need there is in Milton, so that we make sure that we help, you know, ourselves and our neighbors at the same time. So that's kind of what we're looking at. And in the meantime, I ran into a wonderful high school student that also had an idea to help the community. And I'd like to introduce, I always say it wrong, Aisling, 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 Aisling Roshan, and I'd like to have her talk about her idea.
All right, hello everyone. I'm Aisling Roshan. I'm a junior at Milton High School, and I've been working on creating signs to help raise funds for the Ponset Neighbors Together Fund. So they look like this, and they're meant to show support for emergency workers during this time. I got the idea from when I visited my grandparents on the South Shore, they lived in Situate. Don't worry, I, I stayed the appropriate distance away. But as I was driving there, I saw a lot of people had on their doors these, these adorable, like handmade heart signs. And I asked my grandma about them, and she said that they were to show support for emergency workers. And I thought that was a great idea. And as my, when my mom found out, she works as a nurse at Mass General right now on a COVID floor, she, she like really appreciated the gesture that people are making. And I thought it would be great if people in Milton and around the Napontet area could also show their support for the workers. And then the proceeds could go to helping others, too. So that, that was the idea I have. And so I've been making these signs with my mom and my sister here at my house. And I've completed about 100 of them today, and I've got more batches still going. So, yeah, I just want to help as many people as possible during these times. And I thought this would be a great way to help while also showing support for the people who are working during this time.
That's, that's great. That's great, Aisling. That's really great. And, yeah, we need to try to help you in any way we can on that. That's fabulous.
I just wanted to...
Oh, I was, I was gonna say, Lisa, before we got into the, I was gonna say, we want to hear from you, so go ahead.
Okay. I'm, thank you very much for hearing us on this. I guess I have a dual representation tonight, clerk of the Milton Interfaith Clergy Association, and on the steering committee of the Courageous Conversations toward racial justice. And I'd just like to communicate, and we, of course, have access or in, are in dialogue with hundreds of folk in Milton, and we've gone out to the borders of Quincy, and Matapan, and Dorchester, and Hyde Park. And just want to communicate an excitement that is rising around this idea, the possibility of it, the powerful agency behind it, because of course, COVID is calling us all to love our neighbor as ourselves, to have, be self-respecting, and other-regarding. I mean, it's really showing us that we are an interdependent species, that we're all in this together, and we affect one another just by our interactions with one another and our proximity. And I just want to say that, you know, this is my fourth year here serving first parish in Milton, and I remain really impressed by Milton's civic consciousness. It is very uplifting, and just something that I just am constantly feeling privileged to be a part of this community. The civic consciousness, the way to bring together people to help other people. I mean, Milton is very good at this. And so we're equipped already to use our resources to reach out to our neighbors, our Napontet neighbors, you know, to deal with something that has no borders, COVID has, has borders. And it really will help everyone. I mean, we all know this. And we didn't know exactly what the next step might even be, if this interests you as well. Do we need to, do you need to go to the town council to see if this is even possible in Milton, or, you know, this is, this is a nascent idea, and we're not quite sure how to approach it. So if you could help us with that as well.
I just wanted to say one more thing, too, about, you know, like Milton Food Pantry is now open two Saturdays a month, you know, to service the people in Milton. And I just wanted to share, this is, this is, I don't know how much you can see, this is the list of just the Dorchester Food Pantries. And, and like I said, the one that, one of the ones we want to partner with Stephanie's is open, they're supposed to be open Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and now they're open five days a week, because of the need is so great. And again, we're talking right across the river, down River Street, you know, not even deep into Roxbury. So that's why it was, it was like, for me, when I was doing all these phone calls and research, it was just devastating to me, you know, hearing the news that those communities are being affected so much harder than the suburbs, because they can't isolate. So it's just, anyway.
No, it's, it's, it's very helpful. So, so, so thank you, Debbie. Thank you, Karen. Aisling, Aisling, Ashlyn?
It's, it's Aisling, but yeah.
I was right, I was right first. And Reverend Ward, I'll open up to questions. The, the only observation I'll make initially is, you know, to the extent that it's helpful for us, for, you know, Milton's government to be in partnership with Boston's government, you know, we've worked with their city council before, we've worked with Councilor Andrea Campbell over there before, and to the extent that it makes sense to partner, to try to partner with Boston, or with segments of Boston, maybe we can try to do that. And then, and then it seems like the other piece of it, to Lisa's point, is you've got this kind of governmental partnership, but then you've got this kind of public-private or public nonprofit partnership as well. So that's the only observation. We tend to need to figure out how to exactly put that together, but it sounds like it would be kind of Milton government to Boston government, and maybe the, and the nonprofits kind of in there as well. But that's, that's just an initial thought. I'll open it up to questions or comments from the members.
I just want to make one comment, and then actually, Zeneta Armstrong, who is the colleague that is serving the Church of the Holy Spirit in, in Matapan Square. She has already reached out to Andrea Campbell, so there's already a little bit of, of work there, just so...
Great, that's great. That's great. That's great. And, yeah, we've worked with Andrea before on airplane issues.
That's good.
So, all right, other comments, sorry, I didn't mean to, comments or questions from the members?
So I have a question, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Richard.
So, I get the need, I'm very familiar with the Food Pantry. As we saw this week, Greater Boston Food Bank raised $3 million in their, which you know, five, in their five-by-five campaign. They gave away $8 million, they had $8 million pounds of requests the last month, which is double the normal, that's $4 million pounds more than a normal March request. So I'm not sure exactly what we can do. So are you looking to create like your own 501, your own nonprofit here, or, I'm just not exactly sure. I'm willing to help you with whatever we can. I'm just not sure what you want to do. I see the, I see the catchment area, where you want to go. What can we do to help you? What is it you're looking for from us? If the chair said partner, partner in which way?
I mean, Karen, I think, and, correct me if I'm wrong, that you were hoping that this would be a sort of a new style of a, of a town fund, that a United Way fund could be more of a regional fund than a town fund, that this is kind of a new, that this would be...
Yeah.
Yeah, I have to say, United Way was really excited by the regional thought that we could work with neighbors to pull something together that funds would benefit a whole region, not just necessarily a town that's known to be fairly wealthy. And yes,... just necessarily a town that's known to be fairly wealthy and, yes, very diverse and, you know, rich in its culture and texture, but also known to be, you know, the fifth wealthiest woman in the world lives in our town. So that, you know, maybe the need isn't so great there, but is there a way to use our partnership and our work together to benefit our neighbors that are just right across the border from us?
And good bridge building, very good bridge building, too.
Absolutely, yeah. And to monopolize on bridges that we've been building through Courageous Conversations now for four years, you know, we really feel like our neighbors there in Matapan and Hyde Park and Quincy and Dorchester that we see on a monthly basis are like family now that we've been on this journey together for four years. It really is incredible, the bridge building that's taken place through that whole initiative. So, yeah, so I don't know, it wouldn't be forming a new not-for-profit. We don't have time for that, but in using, I'd say, you know, the town model that United Way has created, we could work together to build a framework that would benefit these not-for-profits in, in our area and work together to distribute those funds responsibly. And equitably.
Okay.
Based on the need and the demand that we're seeing.
Other, other comments or questions? Oh, Richard, do you have something else?
No, I'm good, no, I'm good.
Other, other comments or questions from the members?
Yes, Mr. Chair, so to Richard's point, I guess that's really the question is, you know, how would we go about doing something regionally? And just to step it back from it, the chair mentioned at the beginning, we got this idea from the chair of the Select Board in Winchester, who said, this is a great program, the United Way helped us with this, they did most of the work. And it's a way to, what he called it was give where you live, that it was a way to kind of entice residents of a community to donate to institutions, nonprofits with the food pantry within their own community that, that needs help without sending their dollars far away to help at a more remote charity or organization that is doing some good work. So that's what we have been kind of working towards. The town administrator and Jennifer McCullough were doing some work, and they had spoken with Winchester and had done some outreach, I think, to the United Way. And then this idea, I heard of this on Monday, that maybe a regional approach might be the way to go here. I think what you're hearing from this discussion is, if there's a way that we can do that, many of us would be interested in trying to do that. My, and Karen and I talked about this, one of my concerns is we're already several weeks into the COVID crisis. So every day that goes by is in which we don't have a Milton page created for donations, it's, it's a day where we don't have people donating through that page to our own food pantry and the Milton Residents Fund, perhaps seniors through the Council on Aging. So I think we want to act fairly quickly on this. And I'd like to see it get, frankly, I was hoping it would have already been set up, and we would have rolled it out a couple of weeks ago, but we are where we are at this point. And if there's a way to do a regional approach and to do it fairly quickly and make it happen, because you, I would think, and maybe the United Way could help us with this, Karen, I would think we need to come up with a way that more people are gonna know where their donations are going to, and there's a way to divide it among the different organizations. And we want to be transparent with what we roll out to residents of the town by telling them, we want, we'd like you to consider giving to this organization. So I think a lot of logistical issues that we're gonna have to work through here, and hopefully it's something we could still do quickly. And if not, as I said to Karen, I'd still be interested in moving forward on the Milton page because, well, you know, while we have a relatively affluent population, we also have a lot of residents who do need help and need, need a helping hand. And, you know, the food pantry and the Milton Residents Fund have received some funds from this board as Governor Stoughton trustees. We, we jumped on that pretty early in mid-March and transferred money right away to both of them. And I know that there are other organizations through the Swift Fund and the Martin Fund that provide funding for the Milton Residents Fund. But it wasn't that long ago the Milton Residents Fund came to us, was looking for a more substantial donation from Governor Stoughton. Because the Swift Fund was paying down so quickly and more efficiently than they might otherwise have wanted to, and we want to preserve those funds, we don't want them all not available a generation from now. It would be nice if we can keep that going, because they've all been around for a very long period of time, hundreds of years, in the case of the Governor Stoughton Fund. So, so I think there is still a lot of need in Milton. And there's also, I think there's a layer of people who, you might have one or two, it might be one parent or both parents who are either dealing with a furlough or a layoff, yet they own a home, they have some savings, they're not quite within the income criteria that might make them eligible for the food pantry, but there, there's also a need there. So perhaps there's a way we can look at broader ways that we can help people, given the unprecedented circumstances and some of the dire consequences and predictions that we're hearing. You have only to turn on CNBC any time of the day and hear talk about Great Depression and two years before we get out of this, and how long it's gonna take people to recover. And we know how high the unemployment numbers are going. So, so I, I think there's a real need in our community, but I, if there's a way we can do a regional approach and try to set it up pretty quickly, I'd be interested in seeing what we could do in that circumstance and work with our neighbors.
Other, other comments or questions from the members, Ms. Collins?
Well, it, it sounds like maybe a couple of steps to take are to talk to town council and then also maybe have some kind of conference call with United Way to see how, how this could be structured since there isn't one of these that's being done. I, I think we have more questions than anything else at the moment. So maybe those two steps we could do in the next day or so?
Yeah, can I say, Mike Kelly had reached out to our PR lead who had passed it off to me. So I got in touch with Mike Kelly, did not hear back from him, so I'm not sure if he was the lead for Milton to be working with United Way, but I did not hear back from him to have the conversations about what implementation and all those kinds of things look like. So if someone wants to follow up with him, or should I call again? I don't know, you let me know.
Mr. Chair?
Well, actually Debbie, just a minute, Richard, Debbie wanted-
Go ahead, Debbie, whoever, whatever you, whatever you get to it, no worries.
I just wanted to say, one of the things we talked about is that the different funds we would put in Milton Food Pantry, Milton Resident Fund, the Stephanie's Food Pantry, the Hyde Park Food Pantry, and you go down the line, you know, what's your need this week, what's your need this week? And, you know, as Milton Food Pantry says, you know, we'll pass this week on to the next people. That's what they told us, is if you had money right now, you know, they'll never say no to the money, but at the same time, we don't have a need this week, please pass it on to others that could use it more. And for, for our neighbors there, for a lot of them, it's life or death, you know, it's, they're not getting the food. So when we need it, like, we'll make sure that it, we're always part of that, where the money goes. But right now, the need is greater there. And they, even though they're getting supplemented from the food bank, I know that Stephanie's had to go to the tropical market and buy pasta, because there was no pasta at the food bank. The food bank doesn't have all the food, but they have, they have a lot, and they're doing great work, but it's not, it's not fulfilling all the needs of the families there. But for sure, Milton, you know, is on, on that list as being, you know, we're all, you know, a lot of us are coming from Milton, so we're gonna make sure that, that we're being fair and just to everybody.
Mr. Wells?
So, if I'm reading this right, and I do have a little bit of familiarity with this type of work in my private life, so I think what you're looking to do here is create like a little mini One Fund. You want to create a regional effort, spearheaded for Milton, where we lead the charge that benefits regionally food pantries of not just our own, if should they need it like in a given week, but also those of our neighbors. Do I get that right, Deb?
Yes, but, but we're starting with food pantries, but if we need and we can find residents-
I got it, needs, so you're right, you, you, that's right, whatever the need is, whether it's food, whether it's rental, whatever it is.
Yeah. Exactly, you got it, Richard.
I don't know if-
For help, too.
And what else did you say? I didn't hear what else did you say?
Where, where you said you have your hands in this already, you can come help us. Love to work-
I wear a lot of hats. So, all the ones you mentioned, I'm already familiar with, so, and most people don't realize the needs that, it's correct, you know, food pantries, it's not like Stop and Shop on Shaws where everything is there in one given week. You know, they have to manage with what's available, and just as the things that we're seeing, the shortages that are described on the news tonight to the general public affect the food pantry. So I'm just thinking how the One Fund was created, you know, it was a really big thing, but on a small basis, perhaps collectively, we could help you create this and we could support it strongly, you know, bring all the, maybe something will bring all the partners in, you know, schools, everybody, and have the discussion, how do we do this? We live in a life, actually, we live in a state where I always say it's, it's very easy to be parochial. I think about just your own backyard and not see the backyard across the street. Now Caroline, if you heard her, Caroline Katsour, our health agent, report today that, you know, we have 250 cases of COVID. Our next door Randolph is 750, a community the exact same size as us, 750 active cases of COVID, or reported cases. So, Mr. Chair, I just want to think about this. I think this is something that we could probably really help with, but I think we could have put a little bit of thought into it to help make this happen, I think.
So, yeah, here's a thought, to Katie's, to Katie's point, something, to everyone's point, something we need to move on. And, and if we're gonna have a regional approach, we need a region, right? So, so my suggestion is that perhaps, you know, if, 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 if we had a call, if I could reach out to, to, to Counselor Campbell, and, and maybe we had a call with Counselor Campbell and Reverend, is it Reverend Zeneta?
Zeneta Armstrong, yeah.
And then, and then one of you, whoever is the best one, to try to figure out if we could do something in the short term that makes sense, you know, and to Katie's point, something that's, that's transparent, that, that, that we have the Boston buying on, and we have, you know, the, the Boston, the Boston churches buying on, and maybe the, you know, Milton government's buying on, and the Milton's churches, or Milton's buying on. So, so maybe, you know, that could be the initial reach out to see, you know, what we could do in the short term, you know, Boston government, Milton government, Boston, Milton group, and, and, and Boston group.
And United Way, I mean, I think United Way's still-
And yeah, yeah, I, I, I don't know, yeah, I don't know, Karen, who, you know, who the right people are at the table, I'm just, I'm just trying to think of, you know-
No, I think, yeah, I, I think as Katie said, United Way is just a quick way to get the PR, to get a webpage, to get a donation link, you know, we can do that based on what we've been finding, once those decisions are made, and we know who the beneficiaries are. But it's probably the best turnaround, there's no fee involved, we, we are only charged the credit card fees that people use for donations, and that, that's the only thing that would ever be charged.
So, so Karen, do you think it makes sense to try to have a call, maybe with, with you and Counselor, if she's willing, and I'm sure Counselor Campbell, and maybe Reverend from Boston and you, and maybe Reverend Ward or Andy or Debbie, you know, just to kind of, kind of see what we can do in the short term? Does that, and then I can, we can bring it back to this board, you know, as quick as next week, we'll have a meeting and try to, try to see if there's something we can do. Does that, does that make sense?
That makes sense to me, yeah.
Very exciting.
So, 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 oh, Mr. Wells?
So just one final point, I was gonna say this to Karen directly, is that, so by using the United Way from the nonprofit side, you make getting money, the ability to give money, much easier. So if the United Way becomes part of the mainframe infrastructure of this, you're in business from day one. Now you just have to kind of set the table around it, and then do all the work and the effort to funnel it towards what you want to create. But that saves you a lot. You know, the One Fund had to be created, there was no, you had to create the whole infrastructure. Having the United Way, it gives you the infrastructure to move forward. Thank you, I'm good, thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you all for your time, I get it, I get it, believe me.
So, so may, so, Ms. Collins?
Yeah, I just want to, just, I like to take a realistic approach to these things. I, I do think speed, time is of the essence here, because we are several weeks into this, and a lot of dollars have already gone into different organizations. And just this, just yesterday, I think, it was a Giving Tuesday where, I, I know I got several emails from Milton and non-Milton organizations asking for donations, so we don't want to miss an opportunity and allow money to slip away that we could be raising locally. So, you know, I know, I like to not let the perfect be the enemy of the good here. I think if there's something we can do quickly with Boston, we should try to do that, and it sounds like the chair reaching out to-
Andrea Campbell.
Is a good start, but if it's, if we're finding that this is gonna take a long time, then I think we should try to get a page set up so we can start getting donations, and we can continue working on the regional approach. But that's, that's my only concern here is-
Yeah, Karen, what if, sorry, sorry. Would it be possible to do that? I mean, to, to expand the idea, would United Way be open to that, that, you know, you start one way and then you, and then it expands?
Yeah, you know, I just want to be cognizant of what was mentioned with the transparency. People want to know what they're giving to, so I think we need to be as clear about that as we possibly can. And maybe, you know, we have a great conversation with Counselor Campbell, and we can step into defining that better. You know, I think it's a pretty basic model, you know, donations funnel in, and we get those to, the not-for-profits that we have vetted and understand are on the boots, are boots on the ground, getting the money out quickly. So those are the priorities, you know, that United Way would work with this. So, yeah, it, it can work quickly, but I think we need to have some form around that description when we release the, you know, the first press release and launch the website.
So, 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 so if it makes sense, you know, we'll, we'll try to have a call like that tomorrow. If, you know, if, if you guys, if, if, whether it's Karen and/or Lisa and/or Debbie, you know, connect with me, and I'll reach out and, and connect Reverend Zeneta in, in Boston, and I'll reach out to, to Counselor Campbell, and we'll try to organize a call as soon as tomorrow afternoon or, or Friday, if that, if that makes sense.
And Aisling has, like, by Friday, she's gonna have 200 signs available. So I'm gonna probably hold some of them here, and then we'll probably pass them out to the churches, but we should get those out, and, and we're selling them for $25 to go to the Ponset Neighbors Together Fund. So we really want to get that out there and, you know, get every house in the house of worship decorated.
May I ask you a question? So is there, is there a fund already established for the Ponset Neighbors Fund? Does that already exist somewhere as an, as a, even if it doesn't have tax exempt status or it doesn't exist, that's already collecting money?
No.
I'll, I'll look it up.
No.
Okay.
I don't think so.
So, Mr. Tellus, you want me to, so would you like me to get in touch with Zeneta? With Reverend Armstrong?
Yes, if you would, and, and then, and then shoot me, you know, the contact information of who should be on the call, and I will send around a, you know, I'll send around an email to everyone and Counselor Campbell proposing a call, you know, late to, you know, tomorrow afternoon or Friday.
Okay, and the best email for you is?
At the Town of Milton, it's mzulis@townofmilton.org.
Thanks.
And then Katie, do you still want me to work with Mike Kelly on trying to get the United Way piece, you know, even started, get a draft so that you all can review and start to get into that loop?
Yeah, I mean, maybe the chair can address that better, but it was Jennifer McCullough and Mike Kelly who the town administrator had designated, but this new approach, I guess I'll defer to Mike on that, as to how he wants to handle it.
I mean, I mean, I, you know, I like, I always liked the idea of parallel tracks, you know, if we could go on parallel tracks, I think, I think that'd be great. So if, if, if Jen McCullough, who's working with it, on it here, can, can, can continue on this track, and we can kind of go on that track as well, I think, you know, and we can hopefully get there on both.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good.
All right, well, thank you very much, so I'll look for something, and then we'll, we'll go from there.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you all very much, appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Thank you, Aisling.
Okay, all right, item 7E, Memorial Day events. Mr. Denahi, do you want to just, we have a, we have a, a, a list of events that I guess Kevin Cook has prepared for Memorial Day, Memorial Day, is there anything that we should be aware of on this, other than-
Mr. Cook is with us this evening.
Oh, is he? Kevin, you're here.
Waiting patiently, yeah.
Oh, Kevin, I, so where are you, Kevin? What's your, we don't know- Oh, Kevin, I, so where are you, Kevin? What, what's your, we don't know who, we don't know which, do we know what the last four numbers of his, uh, of his phone are or if he's a calling user?
Bear with me one second. Let me see if I can find it, but.
No, I know what I'll ask Hillary. Could you unmute all the lines and we'll ask Kevin Cook to identify himself?
2046.
2046. All right. So if you could unmute Hillary 2046 and we'll hear from, we'll hear from Kevin Cook, our Veterans Agent. Kevin?
Yeah. No, Mike, no apologies necessary. It's, it's inspiring to see what my colleagues have been doing to keep Milton moving forward. There's some great, you know, efforts being made. It, it just does me good to see this kind of level of care being given for our community at this time. Um, so I've been working to put a plan together for Memorial Day. And, you know, there's a number of different things that we had to consider, of course, all the different guidelines, working with Mike, consulting with our health agent, trying to come up with some different things. The one thing I'd like to do more than anything is provide some sense of normalcy to our, our residents. And especially regarding something as important as Memorial Day. You know, the, the, the current crisis has put a real emphasis on everybody on the front lines. And we're, we're losing a lot of our, our greatest generation, I think. So Memorial Day is going to take on significance. And the one thing I wanted to do is put on a ceremony on Memorial Day. And while maybe we can't have people in attendance, could we do this and make sure we bring Memorial Day to the residents? So speaking with Mike Lynch and Lisa Hearn today, who's been doing an incredible job at the cemetery, getting things there ready for Memorial Day, uh, we're proposing to broadcast the ceremony live from the cemetery on Milton Cable for our residents.
That's great. That's great.
Yeah. This is going to be possible because Mike's can run a line to the office at the cemetery. We're going to have it right across the street from the office there at the personal, uh, area, um, you know, inside the entrance. And we can have about, you know, eight or nine, 10 people probably because, you know, right now I don't see them pushing back the 10 or less assembly rule. Um, but I've prepared a program. Now, last year, of course, you know, we honored Natalie Foltz and, uh, on a beautiful sunny day at the end of May. And, uh, you know, this year it's going to be a little different. Um, you know, we're, I've got a guest speaker who's going to be there. He's a detective for the Medford Police Department. His name's Rory Lockowitz. He's also a shipmate of mine. He served onboard USS Constitution. He was an eloquent speaker and called upon by many times by the captain of the ship to speak at different, uh, events that occurred there. So I, I thought he'd be a natural and he willingly agreed and, you know, and he's a, he's a first responder also. So it's a, it's a good dual hat he wears, not like, uh, unlike many, you know, in that area. But we're going to have a shorter program. It's going to, unfortunately, we, we don't have the chorus. We won't have the band, you know, there's different elements will be missing. I'll be down in Randolph, uh, handling duties down there, but Al Williams will be in my place. And, you know, we'll be assisting and, you know, we'll have it all set up. But the main thing I also wanted to, just to let you know, is that we're having volunteers assist us with flagging of graves. Very important to have the cemetery, you know, properly flagged. Lisa and, uh, to a credit, took on a, a, a good idea and something that I wanted to do. And what we're going to be doing is having volunteers come out and assign a time for them to be there, small numbers, twos and threes, and give them a section of the cemetery to go flag with a map. And then by doing so, you know, be able to do a little bit here, a little bit there instead of having one big event like we normally would do. So I'd like to continue that on into next week, uh, specifically Thursday and Friday. And I'd like to put some information out to the, the residents that if they want to sign up, I'll have a schedule. I'll put a schedule together where we have no more than, say, eight or, uh, nine people there with myself directing and giving out the flags and making sure everybody's, you know, following the rules. And then by doing so, we can rotate volunteers through in groups, say at 10 o'clock, 11 o'clock, noon, 1 o'clock, 2 o'clock during the day and have them go out there and make sure we get all the, the flags in.
Is that something Kevin that would help to put on the website or is that, uh, how, how would we publicize that?
I was going to put it out on Milton Neighbors and just give my contact information directly because I'd like them to contact me seeing that I'll be the person they'll be meeting at the cemetery. Lisa has been doing this a little bit on her own and I give her credit for it because when I went over to see her today, she had a, uh, you know, an area set up in one of the garages with a checklist and everything like that. So she's been having some people she knows who will ask her about it, come through and do the same thing already in twos and threes and small groups. But I think people want to help and I think this is one of those, uh, things that they can do. The food bank stuff and all the other stuff, it's, it's been amazing. But I think it's going to, like I said, it's going to mean a little bit more this year. So I think if I put it out there to the social media and say, here, contact me directly. We'll schedule a time for you if you'd like to, you know, and then I'll meet you there and give them directions. You know, it'll, it'll make some more residents feel like they've gotten out to do something, even though, you know, not large groups and following the guidelines, but they're able to, you know, make a difference on how Memorial Day is conducted in our town.
Okay, I, I'll open it up for comments or questions. The only thing, um, we, we do have the, the schedule that you prepared. And, and it, and it does include, as it typically does, remarks from a member of the select board. Uh, I had the opportunity and the honor to give some remarks last year. Uh, if there's no objection from the members or, uh, I, I, I would like to nominate the Vice Chair to give the remarks this year, uh, since I had the opportunity last year. So if there's no objection to that, that's the only suggestion that I have on the, on the schedule. So if that's okay.
This caller's eyes just got really big. I'll second that if that's a motion, Mr. Chair.
I don't know if we need a motion on that.
All right, okay.
I don't know if we need a motion on that. Melinda, is that okay with you? Oh, you're muted.
Yes, that's, thank you. It will be an honor and.
Right. So Kevin, if that's the only, that's the only change, um, that, that we make on the, on the, on the agenda. Comments, comments, your questions from the members?
I have just one. I think we should advertise the Flags in Day, two days, I guess it is, uh, through the town email blast too, and on the town Facebook page, you know, as well as Kevin pointing out to Milton Neighbors. But I think it should go all through official channels as well. It's a great plan, Kevin.
Oh, well, thank you. I mean, that's fine. I got no problem with that. I just want to make sure that they're not calling Town Hall and chasing anyone else because I want, I just want them to have my contact information. I, I, you know, one of the things I've prided myself in doing is in the four years that I've been doing, uh, the work with both Milton and Randolph, is I put my cell number out there immediately because it's, it's my official cell. And I got a couple of town employees who said, why do you want that out there? And I said, because they need to get ahold of me, you know? And that's the way I'm looking at it is if I can make sure that people are reaching out, we, we make that connection, then I can set up the schedule. It'll go really smoothly and we'll be able to get the job done. So, you know, any way you want to do it, that's great.
We can still put your number out on the town Facebook page and the town email blast, not just the Milton Neighbors page.
Yeah, no, no, of course.
You can still get those phone calls.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Katie.
Mr. Wells.
Thank you, Kevin. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Kevin, it's Richard. Um, so a couple of things. You know, I've done this every year. You're doing a great job with this. It's one of our special events. And to Lisa, I just want to thank her publicly that I don't think people realize that Lisa and the cemetery trustees, many of them, have been out this week, um, flagging graves. And I was, um, very grateful yesterday that my brothers and I all received a text unexpected from Cemetery Trustee Joe Riordan, who, uh, had just flagged my dad's grave, who most people refer to as Chief Well Senior. But like yourself, a Navy Vet, we're what, two, very proud Pacific Day, for all them served, four brothers served at the same time. So, um, I think it's great. You have a great crew, a great plan. And for anyone who can do this, um, it's a true honor. If you, especially if you've never served, it's a way that you can truly honor those who make our life and our freedoms so special each and every day in this country. So thank you for everything. Whatever I can do, you know, I'm there. So just one question. We are going to this? Is this, Mr. Chair, is that, am I correct in this plan? We're going to go to the cemetery on Memorial Day? Am I correct?
Well, it's, I, I guess it, it's, it's, it depends on, I know, I know Ms. Collins is going to be there. But I, but I, it really depends on, on Kevin and what kind of numbers he can support and, and where we are, I guess, at that point in terms of numbers. I really think it's up to Kevin.
Yeah, the main thing is going to be is the 10 or less assembly, 10 or less assembly rule still in place. You know, ideally, we can space people out in the cemetery. We're not at the normal place where we would be in the older section. We're right across the street from the cemetery office in that corner. And what the, the, wherever the microphone is, it's going to face with back facing towards the cemetery, towards like towards the office, so that the backdrop, when people see us on cable, will be the cemetery behind them with the flags and all the graves stretching out behind us.
So you're going in the old section. That's where you're going, right? I know where you're going.
Yes, definitely. We'll be right there in the old section. Yes. You know, but I mean, we, if, if there's a lifting of that 10 or less rule, we can tell some people, you can come socially distanced. I think we should need to limit it to a certain area because, I mean, we don't want five, 600 people decide, hey, I'm going to just go this year because it's important to me. And now we got a huge, you know, crowd there. The main thing and the main drive for this is two things. Number one, I want to bring the ceremony home to the people so they don't have to come out, especially our seniors. Number two, I want to provide some semblance of normalcy to people's lives if I can. And this is one of the most direct ways we can show regardless of what's going on in our nation, regardless of what's going on in our town and in our state, we are going to honor those who provided the freedoms for us to continue what we do, as tough as it may be and as purposeful as it may be, we'll, we'll honor those people.
Any, um, any other comments or ques, thank you, Kevin, any other comments or questions from the members? Thank you, Kevin. Uh, I guess in terms of who, um, can, can be there, that'll be a, uh, that'll be a, um, uh, to be determined, right? To be continued. Uh, thanks, Kevin.
Yeah, I'll, I'll forward a press release and, uh, final schedule through Mike.
Great.
I'm, I'm, I'm fine with that. I just wanted to know what we're doing. That's all.
Yeah, I think, I think it really is going to be to be determined, you know, at this point.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay. Thank you, Kevin. Uh, item seven.
Yeah, I'll put out the information through Mike and just make sure he's on board with that, all the schedule tomorrow. Because that'll give time for people to sign up for it. We'll get it out on the Facebooks and all the town pages. And that way we can get some people out there and then, uh, sadly, I will not be at the cemetery because I'll be down in, in Randolph. But I know Al Williams will do a great job. I know the ceremony will go off well and I'll look forward to watching it, you know, a replay of it on Milton Cable.
Great. Thanks, Kevin. Um, all right. Uh, item 7F, Discussion of Temporary Outdoor Seating. Mr. Denahi, do you want to tee this up or?
Sure, Mr. Chair, uh, members of the board, thank you. So, uh, over the past two weeks, uh, I was, uh, two local establishments reached out to me. Obviously, um, the eateries in our town are suffering. What they're trying to do is, is plan for the future, um, not knowing what lies out there, but just try to, uh, change their business model a little bit. Basically, they're looking to increase, understanding that social distancing is probably going to be something that we deal with, um, in, in, at least in their future. They're, they're trying to make some space, um, outside of their establishments and, and create some seating, uh, capacity where it would be lost inside of the buildings, um, where people, uh, prior to, uh, mid-March would congregate. So that they can, they can continue and open their door, if you will, uh, when some of these, um, essential, non-essential, orders in place, um, diminish over time. So it's just a, a primary conversation, um, to talk to this board. I had a conversation with, uh, Joe Prondak, our Building Commissioner, um, pretty in-depth about, um, their, their ideas about possibly moving some capacity, uh, outside of, of their, uh, four walls and providing that same service, uh, that the people of Milton have come to know and love and appreciate and probably miss at this point in time. Um, and he didn't have any problems with it, but he did want me to, um, touch the wall with, with, um, this board. He wanted to make sure that any of these locations that do come to the town, um, understand two things and pass this on to the board, that it would be a temporary, um, situation and only allowable if, um, it meets all of, uh, the capacity issues that they have the space to do this. And that, um, it would be signed off from a public safety's perspective, health director, police department, fire department. So that if and when, um, some of these, uh, restrictions are, are lessened, the time now could be spent to start, make preparations for, for a possible reopening, if you will.
So, um, so we'll, we'll open up for questions on this or comments. But Mike, there's nothing that this board, um, needs to, needs to do, no, no, no votes that we need to take on this just to express our pleasure and displeasure? Is that?
Correct. That's correct. Yeah. Um, one, one, one of the establishments, um, uh, has a special permit that would have to be looked at. And Mr. Prondak is doing that. There are some requirements that have to be met. But again, um, this would be a temporary situation, uh, to help these people get back on their feet and employ as many people and entertain as many customers as possible. Obviously, if, if a complaint comes in, it will be addressed immediately and this can be revoked accordingly. But, uh, no, just, just wanted me to run it up the ladder to the board and, and, and let you guys know that there are some, um, well-known establishments in town that are pretty much shuttered down at this point in time that are looking, um, at the future and trying to make the most of it. And in the time between now and then, they'd like to make some arrangements to try to get ready for, for, for those days.
Comments or questions from the, from the members?
I have a couple.
Oh, Ms. Collins?
No, Ms. Collins will go first. Well, I'll go first.
I, I was just wondering, um, I, the Health Department has already put out, um, guidelines for restaurants before and I assume that they would be involved in this endeavor too.
Yes, very much so, very much so. And, and nothing would be signed off, um, without the Health Department's approval.
Great. Thank you.
Richard?
So two, two, two thoughts. One, uh, are they concerned about doing this on their own property? Or B, is this going to be similar to like what was very common in Boston, Quincy, other places where they have some outside seating on a public sidewalk?
This would be outside seating on their own property or property that they are renting from a private entity. Yeah. No, no, no public space in my capacity in Boston. As the Public Works Commissioner, I was the grandeur of sidewalk cafes. This is not that. This is within the footprint of, of their property. No, no public right of way.
And you don't anticipate anybody coming to look for something like that?
No, no, not at this time. No.
Any of these? Okay, okay.
No, the, the, the two, the two that engaged me would both do this on private property.
I'm fine. I'm, I especially seen, was it Rhode Island's openings earlier this week? How their capacity was somewhat diminished. It, it can definitely see it. That it may be necessary. So thank you for bringing that forward.
Any other comments or questions, uh, from the members?
Mike, who are the two, uh, the two parties that engaged you and specifically made their request? I'm just curious.
Steel and Rye and Newcombe Farms.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So, uh, Mike, I don't think you had any negative, uh, response from any, any of the members. So, uh, if you need anything more on this, just, uh, just bring it on.
Excellent. And obviously I'll keep everyone abreast if, if other people come on board or if there's a snag or, or, you know, we, it's all systems go, but, um, I appreciate that. And this will give these, these entities the time to start laying the foundation for, for what they anticipate.
Okay. Uh, thanks, Mike. We, we had an, uh, seven, uh, item 7G and other, um, but we've had our Fire Chief waiting for a long time to give his quarterly update. So if we could defer any other items on COVID-19, unless there's anything pressing until next week, then I would like to move to item eight, which is, um, which is our Fire Department Quarterly Update from our Fire Chief, uh, Jack Grant. Uh, Hillary, could you unmute, uh, Milton Fire Chief Jack Grant?
Good evening. How are you?
Good, Jack. How are you?
Doing good, doing good. Um, yeah, I, I'm going to put you right back with my quarterly report. I'm going to put you right back into the COVID, uh, responses and kind of give you the lay of the land as to, you know, what we. the lay of the land as to, you know, what we've done and where we sit. You know, it's, it's certainly changed the way that, you know, we get through our day and conduct our business. We've adjusted the way that we respond to incidents, basically treat every incident as though it's a positive address, that there's someone at the, at that address that has tested positive. So, and with that, what we've done is we limit the fire department members' exposure at that scene to the greatest extent that we can. You know, if, if we can ascertain that there's, you know, no immediate, you know, health threat to the patient, we actually will stay out in the street and let Fallon handle it. If we cannot make that determination, we'll engage one of our firefighters into the structure and, and again, maintain as much distance. If we can keep a room between them, we do, you know, keep as much distance between us and them as we possibly can. You know, knowing that there could be an issue that's un-COVID related or a complication because of it, where, you know, somebody can be in cardiac arrest and, and we still have, you know, our, our normal line of work that we have to accomplish. So like you say, to the largest extent that we are able to, we've taken a, a step back in, into any exposures. And, and to that end, so far, we're faring pretty well. To date, we've had 13 of our members tested. We've had one come back positive. And that department member who tested positive has been doing well. In fact, has had the test to return to duty and is awaiting results of that. Over the last week and a half or so, we've actually had a good number of our orders come through. So we're in a much better place as far as PPE than we had been early in the, in this whole evolution. So we're, we're doing relatively well there and, you know, have taken the opportunity to, you know, reorder stuff for further, further down the line. So all in all, like you said, we, we look to be in, in pretty good shape. We've taken great efforts and do so on a daily basis to clean and disinfect the apparatus and the stations. And we're continuing to learn and evolve with that as we go along. One of the other things that we've done in recent weeks is we've segregated each station from the other. In normal order of operating times, if, you know, if somebody is out at Engine Two in East Milton or Engine Four up on Blue Hill Ave, the junior man at headquarters would travel and cover that position. You know, we, we've had swaps available in place where if a member needs a day off, they swap with somebody else. So what we've done is anybody that's assigned to Engine Two can only take overtime at Engine Two, can only swap with somebody that works at Engine Two. So nobody crosses to a different station at this point in an effort to limit any, you know, any exposure. So that if, if somebody does come down with this and we don't pick it up in time, that, you know, we should only have an exposure in that one station. So that's, that's basically a summary of where we're at at this point in time.
Thank you, Jack. Comments or questions from the members? Ms. Collins?
I, I just want to acknowledge the work that's being done by the fire department and, and the, the work that you're all doing to work with Fallon, which you do on a regular basis, but this is a totally different circumstance. And so we just very much appreciate it and hope that people's spirits are, are up. And, and it, it's, it's proving to, to be something that is able to be dealt with. It sounds as if you've made some really important changes to the way you do things. And I find that inspiring to know that we have the ingenuity to do these things and, and make a difficult situation somewhat better.
Thank you. I, I appreciate that. It's, and it's, it's interesting. I agree with what you said. You know, we do, we have a, a great department, you know. I can't say enough about these guys. And, and in this point in time in particular, you know, they really, really have, you know, stepped up and given their very best effort. And, you know, we, we have great buy-in from each and every department member.
Other, other questions from the members?
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, Mr. Collins.
So thanks, Chief. Just a couple of things. I saw a thing yesterday. Have you brought in, have you had to bring in, not 24 trauma? I, I saw, I don't know what department had them in yesterday, where they came in and they're doing like a deep clean of the, of the gear. Have you had any trouble getting them in or have you had to have them in at all?
As far as turnout gear goes, no. We've, we've actually, you know, we're in good shape that we've had, you know, the, the gear washers and extractors in place for a number of years at this point. We've got it set up in each, each station. And we had put a policy in place a couple of years ago at this point where, you know, they, we, we washed the gear once a month and we also, after any fire incident, washed the gear. And in the equipment or the substances we're doing the, the washing with, take care of this. So that really hasn't, hasn't, you know, gone beyond the regular order of business. After we did have the positive test, we, we did bring in, and I don't even know the name of the company, I wish, I wish to have it with me because I'd love to, I'd love to give them a plug here. But they, they did come in and do a cleaning of each station for us. And as they did it, they also trained the group that was working in how to do it themselves, you know, beyond that point. So like you said, that's, to that point that we've been kind of learning and evolving as we've, we've gone along. And, and you'll see that, you know, that will continue, you know, beyond, you know, this running its course, that, you know, the, the way we do business in a lot of ways will, will have changed permanently.
You're right there. I agree with that. And just one final point, I just want to thank you for the, for the members. You've been an intricate part on the Fire Station Building Committee since you came on. And as I felt would happen, you and Paul bringing operational expertise to an already very talented committee is something I think is going to bode well for us for the next 50 to 100 years when this is all said and done, this project.
Yeah, I appreciate that as well. And, and it's funny that, you know, the need for a modern station, you know, really becomes evident when you see events such as this that take place. You know, it, it, it's going to provide a much healthier work environment for the people that are there.
Jack, Jack, can I, can I ask when, when your next report, when do you think your next report will be?
It's a loaded question.
It's depressing you say that. Yeah, that's a loaded question, absolutely. As you know, Mike and I have been talking over, over the past several weeks. And you're, you're looking at my last report. We, you know, I, I really, I had intended all along on, you know, retiring in January. And with, with this going on and expected to, you know, potentially peak again in the fall, you know, I think you need stable leadership in place. So, so I think this provides a, a good opportunity where, you know, we're on a bit of a downside and we're in good shape with our PPE, that I, I think the time is right for me to step out. So I will be retiring as of July 1st.
Other comments or questions from the members?
This chief knows that, you know, as he did from the time he became chief, you know, one thing you can look back at, and he and I share one unique thing is that we're both of us, our fathers were chiefs. Chief Grant's dad was chief, as was my father. It's a very unique thing. And the Commonwealth have fathers and sons, both in fire and police service.
Especially at the same time.
I know, at the same time. I know, that's true. But you just take, you, you take a look at not just the personnel, but, you know, the equipment. And we talked, you and I told, I love to talk about equipment anyway. I mean, you, you look at where things have gone in the past 10 years as far as upgrades and equipment and technology that have come in. And can, will continue with the building of these three stations. And that's a feather that you should put in your hat and wear that proudly for the rest of your days.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Katie?
Chief, I want to congratulate you on your retirement and certainly been a strong advocate for your department. And that's been on display in every capacity job, including all of your appearance at the warrant committee where you were, you were certainly there to, to make the case for your department. And, and you've been a great leader of the fire department. I had, a few years ago, I had an opportunity at the time I was the chair of the board and I was able to go to Perry College and attend a wonderful ceremony, Jack, where you became, I think if I'm not getting the title wrong, you was president of the Mass Fire Chiefs Association. That's correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And it was a great ceremony and it shows how much you were held on high esteem by not only the Milton Fire Department and the, all the prior town administrators and select boards you've served with, but also by all of your peers in the firefighting world. So I want to wish you the best. It's been an honor to work with you and thank you for all of your service to Milton Fire Department. Glad we'll have you here for a couple more months, but I wish you all the best in your retirement and thank you for all of your service.
Thank you very much. I will say it's been an absolute pleasure.
So, so Jack, the town obviously owes you a huge debt of gratitude for all your service. I was a newbie on the warrant committee when you became chief and could not have been more impressed from day one when you first presented to the warrant committee. And I didn't know you, but I could not have been more impressed then. And that hasn't changed in the last, what is it, 11 years, 10 years, 11 years?
I'm terrible with dates and time, but I think it's 10.
It's 10, all right, yeah.
I think 10 and into my 11th, but 10, oh, yeah.
So I couldn't have been more impressed the first time I saw you present and I can't be more impressed tonight and every day in between. So it's, 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 it's been an honor to get to know you a little bit and in, in that context. And the sound, the town certainly owes you a lot. So, but you're not going anywhere.
I'm not going anywhere.
Not going anywhere. So, so that's good. But, but it's been an honor, really has.
I will say the same. It really, truly, it, it has. It's been an honor. And I, and I truly mean that, you know, it, it's been a great pleasure as well, which, you know, I wasn't so sure in, in walking in there that it was going to be a pleasure, but it, it has been a great, great fit for me.
All right. All right. So anything else you want to add in your last quarterly report? We may have to have you in here before, before July, just to do a song and dance or something, right?
Right. Yeah, well, it's funny. Mike asked, how do you want to handle making this public? And I said, you know, let them know in September. So the chase is on.
All right. Well, thanks, Jack. Much appreciated.
You know, I, I will say that we, we have a number of great candidates sitting there and, you know, the Milton Fire Department, whoever gets selected will be in very, very good hands going forward.
Yeah. And, and to, to that end, we'll, you know, you know, Mr. Dennehy, obviously we'll get a, get a group together very quickly to, to try to, to try to somehow fill your boots. But, but we'll, we'll.
I have, I have small feet. They're not that tough to fill.
We'll get that going pretty quick. Get that going pretty quick. So, all right. Thanks, Jack.
Thank you. Much appreciated.
All right.
Thank you, Chief.
Have a great time.
Thank you, Chief.
Is it all right, is all right from the members? It's been much longer than we intended, we intended. Can we take maybe two or three minutes to stand up, get a cup of water, and then we can go to item nine, the annual report? I have 9:50. Maybe if, without objection, if we just take until 9:52 to just stretch and get a cup of water, is that okay?
Sure.
Okay. All right. So just, we'll be back on at 9:52. Okay, I have 9:52. So we'll see if people can find their weary, find their weary way back. So we can go item nine. I think we're just waiting on Katie Melinda. I see Richard, Tony's here. So we'll just wait on Melinda and Katie. There she is. There's Melinda. All right. Mike Dennehy, are you back?
I am here.
All right, great. I think we're just waiting on Katie. There she is. So we're on item nine. I see Amy Dexter is, is here and has been waiting a long time. So perhaps we could take the budget items, which are item 14 and item 15 out of order so we can, we can, you know, I probably should have done this earlier so we can get Amy so she can get to bed. But so let's, without objection, we'll move to item 14, which is a discussion of FY20 budget. I'm not sure if, what, what we have on that. And then item 15, which is a discussion of FY21 budget. So I'm not sure if we want to have our finance committee take the lead on this, or Mr. Dennehy? Katie, how do we want to?
Given the hour, why don't we have Mr. Dennehy and Ms. Dexter take the lead on it for us?
Mike and Hillary, could you unmute Amy Dexter, please? And then, so Mike and Amy, if you want to take us through what, if anything, we have tonight on the FY20 budget, item 14, and then the FY21 budget.
Sure. Again, not to gloss over it too quickly because it's, it's very important stuff and there's a lot of great meetings going on. Before I pass it off to Amy, there was a meeting held this past Monday, a joint meeting with the school committee, finance subcommittee, and the select board finance subcommittee. A lot of great work. Again, a lot of great work done behind the curtain with Amy Dexter. a lot of great work done behind the curtain with Amy Dexter and Glenn Pavlicek, MPS Assistant Superintendent for Business Operations and the entire school committee folks working on this, as well as Madam Vice Chair and Member Conlon here. Very constructive meeting. I think we're in a very good place for FY 20. We're on a call this week. It may be too late in the year for nine C cuts. Hopefully that doesn't come back to haunt us, but from a, from a town perspective, having pumped the brakes, if you will, on some of the expenditures that, that we talked about in mid-March and, and asking departments to try to figure out a solution to potential revenue shortages for FY 20 and conversations informal and some, some formal emails with the treasurer and assessor, chief appraiser. I think we're in a good place for FY 20. Having said that, we're going to need to beg, borrow and steal to get through FY 21. So again, it, it's, it's a joint effort from all the department heads in town who have been very responsive and, and understanding of the situation and the rebalancing act, if you will, to the point that where I, I think we're pretty confident that at tomorrow morning's meeting, go over the warrant before we send it to the printer for the budget articles. Amy and Amy can touch upon some of those details. I think we're in a good place to rewrite some of the town meeting articles that were previously balanced and present them to the warrant committee tomorrow night, their approval, and then head towards June 15th and our annual town meeting. Understanding that, again, with every Thursday that passes, more people are filing for unemployment and there's more gray areas with respect to FY 21, both from a state, local and federal perspective. So we are still waiting for an updated consensus revenue report from the state. I know they're working very diligently on it. I was on a call yesterday that Lieutenant Governor and her Director of Local Services, Sean Cronin. It's something that's coming soon, but, but in, in that timeframe of us having to go print, go to town meeting, this was our best guess at some shortfalls and a, and a rebalancing of such. So without further ado, I'll, I'll pass it off to Amy to talk about some of the specifics.
Hey, Mike, hey, Mike, before we do that, can we just find out, she's going to talk about FY 21, right?
Yes. Yeah.
So, so we can just see if there's any comments or questions on FY 20.
Okay. Sorry. Yeah.
First, before we get to.
I kind of molded both the agenda items. I apologize.
I get it. I get it. Any comments or questions from the members on FY 20? Seeing none, we'll move on to FY 21 budget. And I guess, is, is Amy on, Mike?
Yes. Yeah. There, there she is. Is your, is your mic on, Amy? Yep.
Is my mic? Yeah, I'm good, I think. Okay. Well, do you just want me to give a very high level?
I think that would work.
What happened? Okay. So we've been working on this for a few weeks now. We sat down and we looked at our projected revenues, the original estimates that we had projected for FY 21 and the potential effect that the COVID-19 health emergency would have on those revenue streams. The state is predicting that they will have a shortfall in revenues and therefore we're making an assumption that that potentially could affect how much state aid the town of Milton will get compared to our original projections. So we did reduce that estimate by about a million eight, of which 1.1 is related to chapter 70. Chapter 70, there was a new formula that was slated to go into effect for FY 21, that Milton would have received approximately 1.1 million more than fiscal year 20. But there is a likelihood that that could be delayed a, a year or so. So we really don't have a lot of insight at this point. It's, it's pretty much been working with the school committee and Glenn Pavlicek and Mary Gormley on that piece. Preparing for a shortfall now is probably a good idea. And then if better news comes in, it's easier to put something back in than to take it out. So overall, we're predicting about 1.8 million shortfall in state aid, approximately a million in local receipts, which relates to things such as motor vehicle excise tax, meals tax, permits and fees. And then the Board of Assessors have voted to reduce their estimate for new growth from 750,000 to 600,000. So that's an additional reduction of 150. So overall, we're projecting approximately a $3 million, up to a $3 million revenue shortfall. So we had to figure out a way to try to absorb that shortfall, which we believe that as the economy rebounds, that those levels will hopefully get back up to where they have historically been. We're hoping this is temporary. So again, a collective effort, the decision was made that we would use a significant amount of free cash combined with the million dollars of stabilization funds, a withdrawal from the stabilization fund, which is our rainy day fund, those two things to balance the budget. So that left us with about a 537,000 shortfall net. So then we looked at operating budgets, where we could reduce, where we could make cuts without significantly impacting the level of service. Again, assuming that this is hopefully not going to continue for several years. So the main reductions for the 537 were 300,000 on the school department and about 337,000 on the town department. I don't know if you want me to go into detail of specifics of those reductions, but that combined wasn't expected to have a significant impact on the level of service. One thing that I do want to note though, was there was a sig, there was some new teacher positions, an additional bus and some, a pilot program of the teen center on weekends, some minor property that was originally funded, as well as some non-bonded capital with free cash that we rolled back. And we're not funding those items now so that we freed the monies up to help balance the budget. So right now we're balanced, but it does have some reductions in the department's school and town.
Comments or questions from the members?
Mr. Chair. I don't have a question, but I just wanted to thank the town accountant for an immense amount of work over the last two weeks. And naturally, I want to thank the town administrator and the school department, and in particular Glenn Pavlicek. But in particular, I want to recognize Amy Dexter for really going above and beyond the call of duty. This was a real scramble to pull this together. Once we really saw what the financial impact would be and the news coming out of the state that we should prepare for the worst. So Amy has really taken a very proactive approach and has done, I think, extraordinary work. So thank you, Amy.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Other, other comments or questions from the members?
Mr. Chair, I have one question for Amy. So if the were balanced, we went to a July budget, if certain things like the assessors or new growth come in positive, it'd be just like any other year where, am I correct, with that money, it's just an excess goes into the general fund? Maybe what is if it were an excess on a normal year?
Yeah. So if, hopefully we'll get good news. If we get good news between now and the date of town meeting, we could make some additional changes to potentially reduce the amount of stabilization funds or free cash that were being, that are being used to balance the budget. If good news comes in after town meeting, we could potentially have a subsequent article at special town meeting, either the one in July or the one in December, to replenish the stabilization fund. So for instance, if we get news that the reductions from the state are going to be a half a million dollars better than we predicted, we could replenish the stabilization fund at a later date with that money to put it back in. So there's things we can do. This, this is an approach that hopefully that would be a really good problem to have. Much easier to find ways to put it back than to go to special and try to reduce. So.
So a second exercise with regard, with respect to the department heads and their, and their operating budgets. Have you asked them to prioritize anything going back, should any additional monies come before that happens so that they could, so if it does happen and you have to move quickly, they know exactly where it's going to go to?
Well, and I don't want to speak on behalf of the finance committees. I don't know if Katie or Mike want to chime in. I, I have a thought about that. My, my thought is the first thing we would put back is the stabilization fund would be my recommendation.
Okay.
And we would leave the reductions where they are.
Okay.
I, I don't know if other people agree, but if you were asking me what I would recommend that would, that's what I would say.
I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I, I think we're going to have to have that discussion because.
Yeah, I agree. So just, so we have a plan. I mean, I, my point in asking this is I'd rather check off any unknowns and make them known should it happen. So we can do it right away.
Yeah. Yeah. And, and, and yeah, the big, the big question is, seems to me is, you know, we're talking about cuts of $537,000 and those are, you know, those are teachers that we needed to try to lessen the, the, the enrollment crisis. It's the teen center. It's other town departments. We will be able to provide level, services and the services that the town expects, but, but you know, these cuts do hurt. They do hurt. And it, and it hurts to take money from the stabilization fund, particularly because we don't know what the future is. So I think, I think you're right, Richard. That's a discussion that we'll need to have over the next couple of months, to the extent that, to the extent there is improvement and we can replenish some things. The question is, you know, what we, what we do with it. And, and that'll go towards, that'll inform our FY 22 budget too, in terms of what we can maybe put back in. So, so I think we're going to have to have that discussion. But amazing work by Amy to get, and our finance committees and Mike Dennehy to get us to the point where you've taken a $3 million hole and, and with a combination of cuts and use of stabilization and free cash, been able to fill that hole. So amazing work and, and, and we'll take that through the warrant committee and, and then on to town, town meeting.
We posted tomorrow night for the warrant committee as a full board. We talked about that at the finance meeting, but posting the full board for the work. I was planning to pretend it.
We, sorry, Madam, Member Conlon, we did not get that posted. I did, that, that fell through the cracks unfortunately. I, I will be testifying. I'd, I'd appreciate it if you could join me and I believe Amy is, is scheduled to. I understand it would be more resounding with the entire board there, but unfortunately we didn't get that posted in time.
Is it, Mr. Denny, is it on cable?
It is, yes. Yeah. I believe it's, I believe it's a Zoom conference. Yes.
I'm fine with that. As long as it's on cable. I'm okay with that.
Okay. Do, do we need to, should we vote this budget with those changes? Should we vote this, vote this budget?
I'll make a motion, move the budget. I don't have the number, but if you read the number, I'll make the motion.
I think we can say with, to, to revise the budget as, as submitted by the town accountant and the town administrator.
To revise the budget as submitted by the town account and the town administrator.
Motion's been made and seconded. This will be a roll called vote. Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Farrington?
Yes.
Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Zulis, yes. Okay. Thank you, Amy. I think, I think you're all set. I, I see also, I, I do want to get back to the agenda, but I, I see Kevin Freitag and I think Kevin's on the line only for the next item, which is the electronic delivery article. Is that right, Kevin? Is that what you're on the line for? Kevin, you're muted. Hillary, can you unmute Kevin Freitag? Yep, here he is. Kevin, are you, are you here primarily or solely for the electronic delivery article?
Mr. Chair, I was here to provide some information on that, on that topic, as well as I believe an update on the animal shelter.
Oh, right. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. So yeah, we can't let you go. Okay.
Those two.
All right. Okay. All right. Sorry. We can't let you go. All right. Let's.
That's all right.
Let's try to, let's try to speed through. Let's go back then and go to item nine, which is an update of the FY, FY 19 annual report. Very well presented and written by Mr. Wells with a few tweaks that were suggested along the way. And I think this is on for discussion so we can get this on to the printer. Is that, is that where we are on that?
That's what I hear, Mrs. Zulis. This is a first for me. I, I know that I've talked to the chair, race reporter, put a lot of time in on it. I'm not sure exactly what, we all have our different writing styles, but I'm not sure exactly what you want me to change in it.
No, I, I mean, I, I think there, I think there were just a couple of, you know, a couple of tweaks Ms. Conlon had. I had a couple of tweaks, but, but I thought it was great. I thought it was great. Any other comments or questions from the members?
Richard, did you get the changes that were sent over?
I didn't, I didn't change anything. I, I was off all day today. I didn't change anything. We have a different writing.
So, I mean, there are some typos that I think we at least need to fix those.
Jennifer did that for me tonight. Jamie did that tonight.
All right. All right. It's not included here.
Great. Great. Okay. All right. I think we're all set with that then. We can get that off to the printer.
So then I'll move that we approve the annual report of the select board for the year ended June 30th, 2019.
Motion's been made and seconded.
Someone second it.
Motion's been made and seconded. It's a roll called vote. Ms. Collins? Mr. Farrington?
Yes.
Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mrs. Zulis, yes. All right. Thank you for all your work on that, Richard.
You're welcome. Good luck next year, Mr. Chair.
All right. Item 10, discussion approval of 40B approvals, proposals. We have one thing to approve here, which is a supplemental letter on 648 Canton Avenue. On, on April 14th, the developer submitted a supplement to the application on 648 Canton Avenue. We have reviewed that supplement and including our, our consultant has reviewed it as well. And, and the view is that that supplement does nothing to address any of the comments that we, that we provided on, pardon me, on April 15th. And so the proposal is to just submit a very brief letter along those lines, which is this supplement does nothing to address any of the comments that we made in our prior letter on April 15th. So that is the, so that's what we're seeking. That's the, the, the approval we're seeking.
With that, the form of motion, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, just to move to approve a supplemental letter, the supplemental letter for 648 Canton Avenue.
I'm moving to approve the supplemental letter for 648 Canton Avenue.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. This will be a roll called vote. Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Farrington?
Yes.
Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mrs. Zulis, yes. Hillary, if you could, if you could get that ready and, and we should email it out because technically it's due, the, it's due today. So we can email that out. We could email that out before midnight and I think we'll be fine on that. So if you could, if you could do that, either, either multitasking now or as soon as we, as soon as we finish here, that would be good.
Yes, I can do that.
Great. All right. And then the other item on the 40Bs, at our last meeting, I mentioned that I would, that I would have my notes from the call with. That I would have my notes from the call with Mass Housing, which I do. That Ms. Collins and Senator Timothy organized a call with Mass Housing on the 40Bs. On April 23rd, and it was, Senator Timothy organized it. It was participated in by Representative Driscoll, myself, Ms. Collins. Our consultant, Jimmy Barrett, from Mass Housing, Ms. McDonald, Paul McMorro, Georgia Tool, Kat Miller, Mike Bosby, Mike Bosby participated. And as I mentioned at our last meeting, it was a very fulsome discussion of the process and the issues. And the Mass Housing's process on this. Mr. McMorro told us that with respect to 648 Canton Ave, they have asked for multiple rounds of redesign. They have indicated concerns with the massing, with the surface parking in front of the, of the project with the proximity. Proximity of the parking deck to a Butters, with the, with the, the runoff of the water. That they have surfaced those concerns with the developer and they are continuing to have discussions with them on that. On Blue Hill Avenue, Mr. McMorro said they have engaged in the same process and suggested reorienting the building. And talked about the massing issues and Mr. McMorro has said that they were not comfortable with the projects as submitted. On East Milton, Ms. McMorro told us that the developer chose not to redesign the project until the, the town's comments had been submitted. Those comments have since been submitted. He said that there were more comment, more conversations to be had with that. He said they were engaging in these discussions with the developers. And would continue to do so to try to get better projects. Asked about the timeline. Mr. McMorro said he couldn't give us a definite idea about the timeline. He said on Canton Ave, they had additional comments and additional work to do on Blue Hill Ave. The, the town comments were being considered on East Milton Square. He said there were issues, issues had been raised and there was a lot of staff work that continued to be done on that. And so, and then Ms. McDonald's. At the end of the call said that the line of communications were open and that there were any questions or follow-ups. That would be, that would be welcome. So that was, that was, and I think I mentioned on, on, on the town side, myself, Ms. Ms. Collins. Representative Driscoll, and certainly Senator Timothy and our consultant, Jimmy Barrett, all expressed the concerns with the projects that have been. Set forth in the letters and sought more time in communication to try to get to a, a good result on these projects. So that's, that's my notes. Ms. Ms. Collins, I don't know if you want to have anything to add on that in terms of that meeting or that call, conference call.
I think that was an excellent synopsis. It gives a lot of time and, but that was, I have nothing to add.
Any, any other questions or comments on that? Hearing that, oh, the other thing to note is that we have received the site approval letter for. The Ice House project. That has been posted. A lot, many of the comments the town submitted were included in. The, the project eligibility, eligibility letter and the conditions that should be considered at the next stage at the zoning board of appeals. And the developer has indicated a willingness to continue to discuss modifying the project. To try to make it a better project for all on that. So that's, that's where we are on that one. All right.
Mr. Chair, just one question.
Yeah, please, yeah.
I just, just relative to the Ice House, maybe Melinda, some. Oh, Mr. Denny, what was the timeline between their submission and that letter of approval? Do we know what that was? How many months?
They submitted it in, in the, the initial letter that, that they submitted was in December. I believe it was December. Our response was in January. And then, and then the, the approval came, I think, last week.
Okay.
The week before.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Item 10, I'm sorry, item 11. That was item 10. Discussion approval of the Milton Patrol Officers' collective bargaining agreement. Mr. Dennehy, could you tee this up for us?
Sure, yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Last Wednesday, we had a remote meeting with the members of the Milton Police Association. And I have in my hands and have forwarded to each you a memorandum of agreement between the Town of Milton and the Milton Police Association. For the settlement of a collective bargaining that will take effect July 1st, 2019 through June 30th of 2022. So we're looking at a three-year contract. Cost of living increase FY 20. 2%. FY 21, 1 and 1/2%. FY 22, 1 and 1/2%. And then in FY 20, the current fiscal year we're in. A five-year step of 1%. And a five-year step in FY 21, coming July 1st of 2020, of 1%. I, I have the agreement here in, in my hand and it would go and, go into effect upon ratification by this board.
Comments or questions from the members?
Can I do both of them, Mr. Chair, and then vote on, vote on them both together?
Yeah, Ms. Conlon actually had.
I would like to make a motion. So I'll move for discussion purposes that we approve and sign a memorandum of agreement between the Town of Milton and the Milton Police Association, as presented.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further, any discussion?
Like to thank everyone who worked on this. In, in our office, our chair and, and TA and also in, in the union as well. Thank you, everyone.
Any.
I, I, I in particular want to thank the chair for his involvement in taking part in negotiations with the town administrator. I want to thank both of you for all of your efforts in negotiating this on the town's behalf and. Thank you. It was not an easy one. We, as we know, a lot of unfortunate information that indicated that some of us didn't support. All of the members of the public safety forces and we know, we've already spoken to that. That was not the case. The board was pretty much relaxed upon this. So it was really unfortunate that was said, but I think it just shows that we're all very much in support of our public safety personnel. I really appreciate the efforts of the chair, the vice, the, kind of, the, the, and the unions.
Don't forget the chief.
The chief, that's right. John King.
Thank you, Richard.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, this will be a roll call vote. Ms. Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Farrington.
Yes.
Ms. Conlon.
Yes.
Mr. Wells.
Yes.
Mrs. Zulis, yes. Okay. Well, I think we just took the one, so the next one, item 11, I'm sorry, item 12. Is discussion approval of the Milton Superior Officers' collective bargaining agreement. Mr. Dennehy, do you want to tee this one up as well?
Sure. Again, thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I also hold in my hand a memorandum of agreement between the Town of Milton and the Milton Police Superior Officers. Effective July 1st, 2019 to June 30th, 2022. It also includes a cost of living increase, increase for fiscal year 20 of 2%. Fiscal year 21, 1 and 1/2%. Fiscal year 22, 1 and 1/2%. Additionally, in fiscal year 20, 15 step, 15-year step, 1% increase has been added. As well as a FY 21, 1% increase step for the superior officers. And I'm looking for ratification of this agreement tonight from this board. Thank you.
Questions or comments from the members?
Mr. Chair, I'll move that we approve a memorandum of agreement between the Town of Milton and the Milton Police Superior Officers, as presented.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion?
Thank you also to this union, to Michael Collins, the union head, but also to our chair and the town administrator, Paige Appolito, and Chief John King for all of their efforts.
Okay. Any further discussion? This will be a roll call vote. Ms. Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Farrington.
Yes.
Ms. Conlon.
Yes.
Mr. Wells.
Yes.
Mr. Zulis, yes. Okay, item 13, discussion approval of the animal shelter request for qualifications. And so now we'll, we'll get Mr. Freitag on his way, hopefully soon. So who is best to tee this one up? Is it Mr. Dennehy or Mr. Freitag?
Sure, Mr. Chair, I can provide a brief update. Okay, Kevin, go ahead. Yeah, I was just going to introduce that.
Go ahead, Mr. Administrator.
Oh, yeah. So that, thank you, Kevin. Thank you, Town Council. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, this is the board. This is the next step in the process for the animal shelter. This would be a request for qualifications that Town Council and the Chief Procurement Officer, Mike Kelly, have been working on with respect to an owner's project manager. So the, the Animal Shelter Advisory Committee is, is putting out a request for qualifications to find an OPM, if you will, to manage the construction. Portion of this project. Teed up, Kevin?
Absolutely. All I'll add to that is that the RFQ requests that the responses be back to the town by June 10th. So just in terms of the timeline. And the next step after that would be once we have the, the RFQ lined up. Or, excuse me, the responses to the RFQ have been received and we've, we've awarded. The bid or a bid to someone to take as the lead role as OPM. We would then use that OPM to put together the, the final step of the project here, which would be the. Invitation for bids to actually build the animal shelter. Those, that's going to be the final step of the process.
Comments or questions from the members? Hearing none, we'll, I guess, take, do, do we, we need to approve the RFQ? Is that right, Kevin?
Yes.
And the, and the change, do we need to accept the change? To, what was it? Number five, item 2A or something like that?
Yes.
Yes.
My notes.
That, thank you, Madam Vice Chair. So later in the day. The astute legend, John Flynn, sent over an amended version of the RFQ that I had submitted to you yesterday with one minor change. So what you would be accepting is Mr. Flynn and Mr. Freitag's latest version of the RFQ. Which will go out immediately and as Town Council said, be due back on June 10th.
That's right.
All right, so, so I will entertain a motion to approve the animal shelter owner's project manager request for qualifications.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? It's a roll call vote. Ms. Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Farrington.
Yes.
Ms. Conlon.
Yes.
Mr. Wells. Oh, Richard, you're, you're muted.
Oh, shoot.
Now you, I got you now. Oh, you're muted again.
Muted.
Oh, there you go.
Yes, yes.
Okay, Mr. Zulis, yes, thank you. Okay, thank you, Kevin. I think you need to stand just for one minute more. We're going to go to item 16. Approval of reopening and closing of the town meeting warrant. We're going to be talking about the electronic delivery article here. So I think I need a motion to reopen the town meeting warrants.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Roll call vote. Ms. Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Farrington.
Yes.
Ms. Ms. Conlon.
Yes.
Mr. Wells.
Yes.
Mrs. Zulis, yes, the warrant is reopened and so we have a revised draft of the electronic delivery article. And, and the question is whether we've replaced that, pardon me, in the warrant. And so, Ms. Conlon, would, would you mind kind of teeing this up, the members?
Sure, Mr. Chair. Kevin Freitag, Town Council, and the town administrator, Susan Galvin, the town clerk, and Jennifer McCullough. Who is the licensing agent in the select board office, and I have having a few phone calls regarding this article. This, as everyone knows, this really stems from Jen's work and her idea in the first place to put this. Bring this to our attention, to bring this forward to town meetings. So she's done a lot of research on this. There were a number of questions that came up kind of as we went through the process and every time we had a phone call, we seemed to identify another issue. But I, I think through the extensive work mainly by Town Council and the town clerk, we've managed to identify them and address them. Through this proposed recommendation, you'll see the article's been expanded a little bit to apply not only to electronic delivery of the warrants, but also. It applies to election warrants and it applies to taking out. An existing bylaw provision that requires the warrant committee to give a report to the voters on valid questions. That's some old language in the bylaw and we've been advised by Town Council that that's no longer permissible for the warrant committee to do anyway, based on state election or county finance laws. So the, Kevin Freitag has drafted this recommendation. I think it would be better if he spoke to some of the changes. I would just, the only thing I would add is, and I think we forwarded this to the board. I, after one of our conference calls last week, I emailed a number of town meeting members whom I had email addresses for and I thought might. Give us some viewpoint. All of them have a lot of experience in town government. And we solicited their thoughts as to whether it makes sense, first of all, to move this forward in June or defer it to a later date. And to weigh in a little bit on the electronic delivery and some of the other sections of the, of the recommendation. And a number of them got back to us. I, I would say the majority thought this should go forward in June. A minority thought that. It may be a little too complex for a virtual town meeting and maybe it should be deferred. But all of you have the responses that we received. People raised a number of good points. And I think at this point, I'd like to ask Kevin Freitag to walk us through what some of the provisions of the recommendation are.
Thank you, Mrs. Conlon. So this, again, stemmed from. A lot of work that was done by Jennifer McCullough and others to consider whether it would be possible to eliminate the need. To deliver paper copies of warrants for town meetings and elections to all the residences in the Town of Milton. And some of that discussion was driven in part by the tremendous cost savings to the Town of Milton that could occur if. The town were able to accomplish the necessary amendments to the bylaws. So, starting from there, we took a look at the bylaws and the sections in the bylaws that actually speak to what the requirements are. In regard to the delivery of warrants. What became clear pretty quickly was that the, the bylaw. Really sort of merged together the notion of warrants as they relate to town meeting. And as they relate to elections. And it became clear that in the normal circumstance, when you have an annual town meeting. Proceeded by a few days by the town election, the election warrant, if you will, which is never specifically mentioned in the bylaws such. In other words, the bylaws written doesn't in any place say election warrants. But in practice, the warrant for the town meetings included the election warrant, which described the various elections. for the town meetings included the election warrant, which described the various elections, town elections, as well as articles for town meeting and recommendations on those articles. So what was necessary to do was sort of distinguish in our revisions to the bylaw that there are town meeting warrants for both these annual town meeting and special town meetings, and that there are election warrants which apply to, frankly, federal, state, and local elections. And sometimes, as I said, those are, that's all together. For instance, in the, the annual town meeting and annual town elections, those, those are often the same document. But in some instances, you might have a special election that occurs in September and is not associated with a special town meeting. And so we just had to be very clear that there, there were two sets of election, two sets of warrants, and that we were going to provide for the electronic delivery of warrants in both of those instances. So what we've come up with here are changes that would, that would replace the requirement of the town to deliver paper copies of warrants to each residence in town in favor of the following, which would be for town meetings, it would be to make those warrants available to be read and to be downloaded from the town's website, and for paper copies of those warrants to be provided to members of town meeting and to elected town officials, and also for paper copies to be available at the Select Board's Office and the Milton Public Library, all of those being provided at least seven days before town meetings. So in effect, the vast majority of paper copies of the warrants will be eliminated. However, each member of town meeting still gets one, each elected official gets one. And for those individuals that would like to obtain a paper copy of the warrant, they will be made available at the Milton Public Library and at the Select Board's Office. A similar process will take place for election warrants. So in most instances, again, the annual town election, the annual town meeting, it'll all be together. But in the situation where there might be a special election, those warrants would be made available on the town's website, and they would also be, some paper copies would also be made available to be picked up at the Select Board's Office and at the Milton Public Library at least seven days before such meetings. I think it's important also to call out here that there are state requirements for posting of warrants for both elections and town meetings. The bylaw doesn't affect any of that. Those, those requirements are such that the, the warrants are to be posted in a place to provide notice to the town at least seven days before the meeting, or if it's a, a special meeting that they be posted at least 14 days before the town meeting. All state requirements are going to be abided by. In fact, when the Town Clerk and I spoke with the folks at the State Election Office, we were assured and sort of confirmed for us that Milton is going above and beyond the state requirements here, continuing to go above and beyond the state requirements here. So that, that was important for us to sort of make sure that we were abiding by all state law. That is, in fact, the case. We've gone through these changes with folks from state elections and also from the Division of Local Government. And they are, they, they were sort of on board for these changes. In fact, they were encouraged by the fact that Milton was, would continue to go sort of above and beyond the basic requirement to just post the minimum type of notice. Also, in looking at some of these revisions, we, we picked up on the fact that in the bylaws, there's still a requirement that the warrant committee report on ballot questions, which is a holdover from when these bylaws were initially drafted. And in fact, it's something that the, the Supreme Judicial Court in, in Massachusetts, and then the Office of Campaign Political Finance has weighed in on and said is not appropriate for the warrant committee to, to partake in. And in fact, Milton's warrant committee hasn't done so in a very long time. But it just seemed to us to make sense that while we were looking at these, these two sections in our bylaws that address the process for distributing warrants, that given the fact that these reports were sort of tied in with the warrants and what would be included along with the warrants, it seemed to make sense to eliminate those provisions of the bylaw that are, that are really no longer applicable. So in a nutshell, this entire effort has been made to try to simplify things for the town, to reduce some of the costs that the town incurs, to send out the paper warrants, to make these paper warrants available for free online, but also for individuals that want to pick up paper copies of the warrants, they will also be accommodated. And I think overall, that's, those are the basic main points of the changes that we've made to the bylaw or that we're proposing in this article to amend the bylaw.
So I'll entertain a motion to replace the current article for electronic delivery of town meeting warrants with the, with the revised.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chair. I'll make a motion to, to do that.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any further discussion? It's a roll call.
I just want to thank.
Oh, yes.
Oh, sorry.
No, please go ahead, Mr. Chair.
I just want to thank, I want to thank Kevin and Jennifer, Katie, everyone who worked on this. I mentioned this two weeks ago. I've had two long conversations with Rep. Trisco, who sits in their, the Legislature's COVID Task Force. And one of the things he has repeatedly reemphasized to me is that anything that we can do to enhance our electronic platform right now, because I mean, it's like doom and gloom sometimes. This is the life I've been from. God forbid, we're in this a year from now. We'll have had a year to get the sun out of bounds. So all the benefits could have been mentioned and, and have been hammered out in the first part. COVID is one more reason to show us why we should do this now. So thank you all for your help, and I'm ready. Go ahead, Mr. Chair.
Motion's been made in second. And this is a roll call vote. Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Farrington?
Yes.
Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Zulish, yes. The next item is the stabilization fund authorization. We have an article drafted to approve the use of stabilization funds. Kevin's going to give us the, the, going to give us the highlights of this. And Kevin, I love you, but just give us the nutshell version on this one, if you could.
This is just to follow up, Mr. Chair, to what Town Accountant already spoke about. This is, in, in case the, the funds that the town receives from the state are not what, you know, we had expected them to be a year ago, this article puts us in a position where we will be able to take funds from stabilization to apply to the departmental budgets as set forth in the article. Hopefully, we don't need it. Hopefully, we don't need it in the amount that it's, that it's currently set for, but it gives the town some flexibility at the annual meeting to be able to do this.
And this will become Article Five?
That's my understanding.
Article Five, and then the numbers will cascade down. Katie, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. So, so this will be a new Article Five, and then the, the numbers will cascade down from that. So do we have a motion to insert the stabilization fund article as Article Five?
Yes, so moved.
I'll make a motion. Okay, go ahead. I'll, I'll make that motion. Okay.
Motion's been made?
Second.
Seconded. Motion's been made. Hillary can figure out who made it and who seconded. Pretty close, though, but someone did. So this is going to be.
I got your message, Mr. Chair, loud and clear.
Yeah, this is going to be, this is going to be a roll. You know, it's getting late. You, you know how I get, Richard. It's getting late.
I know. I'm looking at the clock here. It's 10:45.
Yeah, I know. It's a, so it's a roll call vote. Ms. Collins?
I hate to do this, but I have a question.
Oh, no, not at all.
No, I, 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 I should have the, the, the warrant index up. I, I'm a little confused. So this is five, and then 34 is different. So, okay, I think I'm set. Yes, thank you.
Yes, 34 is, is, yes.
That's next, sorry.
Yeah, that's fine. Okay. Motion's been made in second. Roll call vote. Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Zulish, yes. Okay, Kevin. So now, Kevin, I think we're all set with you. Thank you very much. We need a motion to close the warrant.
So moved that we close the warrant.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. It's a roll call vote. Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Farrington?
Yes.
Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Zulish, yes. Kevin Freitag, thank you so much for all your work. I didn't mean to, it, it's great, the great work that you've done to get us to the point where we are. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good night, everyone.
And have a good one.
Good night, Kevin. Good night, Kevin.
Item 17, approval of the index for the town, of the index page of the town meeting warrant. This will be a, to approve the index page of the, the town meeting warrant as amended, inserting the new Article Five.
I'll make a motion to approve the index page of the town meeting warrant as amended.
Second.
Motion's made in second. It's a roll call vote. Ms. Collins?
Yes.
And Mr. Farrington?
Yes.
Ms. Collins, I mean, Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Zulish, yes. Item 18, reappointment of the Metropolitan Area Council member.
So moved that we reappoint Tabor Keely of 674 Brush Hill Road to the Metropolitan Area Planning Council with a term expiring May 31st, 2023.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. It's a roll call vote. Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Farrington?
Yes.
Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Zulish, yes. Item 19, the town administrator's report. Are you still with us, Mike?
Still. No more milk left in the house. Just a couple of notes. Obviously, I, I'd like to formally thank Chief Grant. It's been my pleasure working with him. In this day and age, when, when you have so much to do in town government, it's very nice to know that you have a leader like him. It's almost a set it and forget it type operation over there. I just want to thank him from the bottom of my heart. He's a true gentleman and a true leader in this town. And unfortunately, there will be some very big boots to fill. But I'm sure he's, he's trained and tutored a lot of those folks over there. And I agree with him that, that it won't skip a beat. But I'd like to thank Jack Grant from the bottom of my heart for his service to the town. The other, the only other thing I have tonight is, well, two things. We, we are still open for business. Look no further than the East Milton deck, and you'll see the wonderful work that the Public Works Department has done to spruce that up and give it a little spring cleaning. In my travels today, I noticed that a lot of the construction work that had been completed late last fall, the contractor was back putting loom and seed in, in and around East Milton to all those streets that were inundated with construction vehicles last year. So hopefully, it gets a little bit of rain and a lot of sunshine, and, and it finishes off that wonderful project that they had done over there. So to that point, town government is still open. If anyone has any requests, I ask them, call my office, 617-898-4845, for any non-emergency, and obviously, 911 for any emergency. Last thing I have is, on March 23rd, the Mass Legislature and Governor have temporarily expanded acceptable reasoning for voting absentee to include any person taking precaution related to COVID-19 in response to the declared state of emergency from a guidance of medical professional or local health, state official that they can vote by mail. And, and the Town Clerk would like me to pass that on. She's encouraging people. The deadline to request an absentee ballot is 12 noon, the day before the election. The election is June 9th, so that would be by noon on June 8th. Please file your request early enough to allow, allow time for your ballot to be mailed, or just letting the public know that voting by mail is, is being recommended by the clerk in these days of social distancing and, and public health. And that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you, Mike. The Chair's report, two things. One, first, farmers feeding families will donate milk at an event at Boston College High School, 150 Morrissey Boulevard in Boston, on Thursday, May 7th, beginning at 9:00 a.m. People seeking milk can drive up or walk up to the school and receive up to two gallons of free milk. And that will certainly, given the governor's order, anyone seeking milk that day should wear their face coverings. The last thing I have is along the lines of what we've been trying to suggest to people and advise people and coerce people in a way to do, let's all make sure we wear our masks as we go forward. And I want to thank Demi Davis, who is a rising Milton High School G, no, she's a rising senior, I believe, who, who made one of the masks that, that I've been able to use, the mask that actually we used in the PSA last week. So I want to thank Demi Davis for making some great masks for my family. So, members report. Ms. Collins?
I report.
Mr. Farrington?
Yes.
Any, any report?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mike. I don't have a report, but I would just like to give a nod to, to Chase Berkeley and Tommy McCarthy for getting a radar speed monitor over on Hurlcroft and Pallon. Some of the residents over there had reached out regarding speeding, which is something as board members were very, very familiar with. And they very quickly got that up and running. And I'd like to thank them for that. True pros, as always.
Great. It's a great point. Ms. Conlon? You're muted, but I think I know what you said.
Sorry, no.
There we go. And Mr. Wells?
Yes, I do have two things, Mr. Chair, and thank you. One is, this for Mr. Dennehy. I see some communities are handing out masks. Perhaps maybe he can have a conversation with Carolina and Lieutenant Caputo. I don't know if that's a situation here, but Cambridge, where I was today, they went through 8,000 masks in one day for their residents. And some of them, I drove and saw theirs, and it was pretty massive today. So just a thought. I don't know if it's on our radar. And the second thing, I don't usually like to talk about personal things. This person is long in bed. But Mr. Dennehy reported to us last week about the really great salutes that took place from the first responders, that Lieutenant Caputo, Kristen Shipman, and Officer Kelly Little put together. And when I came home, I told my wife about it, as you know, who's on the Cambridge Police. And today, they did it off in Cambridge, if you saw the news. But one of the things you'll see on the news, she's someone who gives back in so many ways, not just as a police officer. What she did today was beyond what I could describe. But for all the nurses, for National Nurses Day, she sang to them, to every nurse and every patient in that hospital. It was quite an emotional thing. A patient actually went into arrest in the ICU while it was happening. And so many people have stepped up in so many ways. And as I always am, I'm very proud of what she did today. So thank you to Pauline Wells for that today. Thank you for that, Mr. Chair.
Absolutely, absolutely. Public comment, response? We didn't have any public comment. And do we want to approve the meeting minutes at this late hour? Or, I mean, are we all prepared to? Do we?
Do you have the energy?
I, I do. If everybody, if everybody's ready to, to do a couple of roll call votes or one roll call vote, I'm, I'm, I'm game.
We did it together, so it's just one roll call vote?
Well, I think we, well, I was thinking, yeah, we can do two. We can do two. We can do two.
That we approve April 22nd and April 28th, 2020 minutes.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. It's a roll call vote. Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Farrington? Tony?
Yeah, I'm here. Yep.
Yep. Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Zulish, yes.
You just got, yes. You just got the flash. The TV screen just flashed three times. It must be the last call. We gotta go.
Okay, all right. Future meeting dates. Do we, do we want to meet next, next week? Next Wednesday or next Tuesday? I think it makes sense to, you know, we're, we've scaled back from two a week. I think it probably makes sense. We've had enough things come up to meet, we'll probably have Bob His again in next week on the, on the virtual town meeting. Hopefully, it'll be a shorter meeting, but do we want to go ahead and meet next week?
We try to.
Can we do the five again?
Let's, let's ask, yeah, one idea is to do the five. Katie, what was your thought?
We try to stick to Wednesday.
Wednesday's fine with me. Is Wednesday fine with everyone?
Yes.
I want me.
Richard asked, Katie, does the five work for you? Or should we keep it at the seven or something in between?
Well, I guess during, while we're working from home, it probably could. I mean, I have been going into the office a few days, but.
Mr. Chair, if I may, the Board of Appeals meets at 7:30, and they are also televised.
Okay.
So five might be more feasible in that regard.
Thank you, Hillary. That's, that's very important. If, if, if everyone can do five, I'm game.
I can do it.
All right, all right. We'll set it for five next Wednesday, May 13.
Mr. Chair, if I might?
Yes, Mr. Dennehy.
Can I wet this board's beak to think about something for next week? So obviously, it'll be a fast-moving current to replace Chief Grant, like this board to name a representative to be on the selection committee. So that we can make that a future agenda item. I'd appreciate it.
We'll get that on the agenda for next Wednesday, May 13th, at five. Any other future agenda items? Hearing none?
Not for next Wednesday, but at some future point. Can we get a report on the East Milton Deck project? Just very, it can be very short, just to let people know where things are at and what the status of that is.
Certainly, yeah. Yeah, I'll have Chase Berkeley drop a report.
Great. Anything else? Any other future agenda items? Hearing none?
A non-COVID world.
Oh, yes, sir. Oh, oh, yes. Yes, absolutely. All right. Anything else? It's time for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion's been made in second. Roll call vote, Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Farrington? Mr. Farrington?
Yes.
Ms. Conlin?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Zulish, yes. Thank you all. Sorry it went so late. We'll do better next week. Apologize for the late hour.
Hey, we got a lot, we got a lot done.